Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Barely.
Councilmember Franco?
Here.
Councilmember Menez?
Yes.
Mayor Bublack?
Yes, all present, exactly six o'clock, outstanding. Uh, declarations of conflicts of interest, hearing and seeing none. A closed session will be at the end, we will hear at the end of the meeting, and approval of agenda as posted or amended.
Actually, I would like to amend the agenda.
Okay.
Um, we have all these wonderful, hardworking gardeners up here. Madam Clerk, if we could move item nine C to the front of the agenda, followed by nine A, then nine F, then the remainder of the agenda, followed by additional public comment. I would move to amend as stated.
For clarification real quick, and that's after we do the proclamations, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did I not say that?
I, I, you could have.
I'm sorry.
I wasn't.
I didn't say that, yes, after proclamations, before everything else.
Okay, that was nine C, nine A, then nine F, then the regular agenda. Yeah, um, I'll, I'll second.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, just to clarify, so it's the nine C, A, and F before public participation, and then just go regular as it goes?
No, I said to move the, the additional public participation, item four, to the end of the agenda.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
No.
Councilmember Nazrati?
No.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Menez?
Yes.
Mayor Bublack?
Yes, so we will start with our proclamations. Uh, so just so everyone knows, if there's anyone in the audience, um, item, action item nine B has been moved to March 8th. So if you're here for nine B, which is a GIS thing, and none of you look like you are, um, except for Mr. Madden, who loves this kind of stuff, uh, that'll be on the next agenda. Um, so at this point, we will go to our proclamations, and we have many. So we have Employee of the Month. Sorry, there's so much stuff here. We got a lot of employees of the month, we're a little behind here, so we've got a lot of great people. Okay, so, uh, for November, Maria Ruiz. Uh, she is a part, she's part-time on November 2008, and then full-time July 16th, 2010. Um, the peers, her peers said that she's a can-do attitude, and has stepped up to take extra responsibilities when needed. She works well with other departments, and is always willing to go the extra mile to get the job done. Maria is dedicated, and it reflects in her work. She's an asset to the city of Turlock, and should be recognized for that. She motivates and reminds me that our coworkers are the reason the city is a great place to work. Maria enjoys spending time with her family, especially when it's spent outdoors, love that. Some of her favorite activities include going rock, to rock concerts, boating on the lake, camping at Pinecrest, and hitting the beach at Lake Tahoe with their fiance Rick and their two children, Ricky and Gianna. A message from Maria, she said, "I'd like to thank those I work with for the support they provide, and I appreciate everyone's teamwork. I am extremely grateful to work with such an amazing peoples." So, uh, is Maria here? Come on up. You get to say more than one line now, come on, come on. Oh, look at it, now that you've got all the guys behind you.
Do I speak here?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, is it on?
I don't know, is it?
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, just a quick thank you, I'm truly grateful for this recognition. Um, and also, I would like to say I'm honored and grateful to work with amazing coworkers, um, for their, I'm thankful for their support and their teamwork. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I've been here, coming up on a week, and Maria's one of the first people that I met. She has been awesome. You know, when you, you walk away, you meet somebody, and as you walk away, people talk about that person. Uh, and Maria is one of those people that everyone's just like, she's just so awesome. She is, she's great, and Captain Pacheco was telling me, she's just, she's my right hand. She does everything for me, and I don't know what I would do without her. So I wanted Captain Miguel Pacheco to come up and say a few words about her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, Chief asked me to come say a few words, so I said, of course, especially just talking about staff. Um, for those in the community that don't necessarily see this side of policing, you know, you see the officer in the car. Um, if you knew what it took to get an officer to a call on time with the proper training, equipment, and everything we need, it supports staff. And, uh, Maria essentially runs Field Operations Division. I kind of have the title, but she actually keeps us all in line. So, uh, to Maria and her family, if they're watching, thank you for all the time you give to her, and, uh, she really kind of runs the division, so I'm honored to say that, so.
All right, Captain Ruiz. Awesome. And now, this is kind of one of my favorite guys that just helped me out on my, I have technology issues, just so you know. So our Employee of the Month for December is Sam Silvia. Sam's here, yes, all right. Sam began his career with the city of Turlock in 2012 as a part-time IT technician, and in 2014 was offered a full-time position with the Information Technology Department. He was promoted to an InfoTech Analyst in 2016, and was recently promoted to InfoTech Analyst Two in January 2022. Sam is a valued member of IT and is knowledgeable with all respects of the city's technology and infrastructure. His peers have the following to say about him. Sam is always pleasant when he assists us at the police department. Personally, I am grateful when he comes in and checks in to see if everything's okay. Sam has great customer service, a great attitude, and friendliness. Some of his personal hobbies are, in 2013, Sam married Sylvia, and in 2017, they had their first son Ezekiel, followed by Mathias and Isaiah. Their three boys are very energetic, I can imagine, therefore get some of their time and attention. He has been a member of the OLA, Our Lady of the Assumption of the Portuguese, and is very active the Knights of Columbus catechism and video recording of mass to stream online, which is important during all this COVID time. And from a message from Sam, I would like to thank my wife and kids for always supporting me. If I ever had a bad day, they're always there to pick me up. I would also like to thank all my fellow employees for helping me get to where I am. Information technology is a constantly changing field that without the support and knowledge of my coworkers, I would not learn as rapidly as I have. And I have grown during my time with the city of Turlock, and have a great support system to thank for that. Thank you, Sam. Want to come up? You know how that works, right?
I just want to say thank you, and, uh, it's a great honor to be recognized as the Employee of the Month. Um, I hope to continue serving the city of Turlock as IT for the next, I think I have 31 years until I can retire, so another 31 years, and then, so.
Wow.
These things need it.
Yeah, definitely. If you guys ever need anything, uh, you know where to get me.
I surely do. Thank you so much. All right, uh, did Steve Williams show up by chance? Anybody see him? All right, darn it. Okay, so we have two retirements, and neither were able to come. They'd already retired, and are probably out, this one's probably out fishing. But, uh, this is proclamation in honor of the retirement of Division Chief Fire Marshal Mark Gomes. He, uh, retired yesterday, on two, 21, 22. Uh, whereas Division Chief Fire Marshal Mark Gomes started his career as a volunteer firefighter for the city of Turlock in 1995, and hired as a full-time firefighter on July 4th of 2002. Mark, uh, quickly promoted through the ranks to the positions of Fire Engineer, Fire Captain, then to Division Chief Fire Marshal in 2008. Division Chief Fire Marshal Mark Gomez was named Firefighter of the Year in 98, and again in 2005. He served as President of the Turlock Management Association Public Safety from 2018 to 2022, and faithfully and consciously served the city of Turlock and its citizens for over 27 years. Mark honorably retired from his position as Division Chief Fire Marshal Effective yesterday, and consistently performed to the best of his ability during his tenure with the city of Turlock. The city council, by this recognition, wishes to express its greatest appreciation for Mark, for his met, wow, this is a hard one, for all of his service, loyalty, and dedication to the city of Turlock. Uh, now, therefore, I, Amy Bublack, by the virtue invested in me as the mayor, and on behalf of the entire city council, and all of our citizens of this community, want to wish him a very, very happy retirement, and thank him for all of his services. And another retirement, this is so sad. Regan, how many more years you have? About 20?
If, if the pleasure of the council.
This one is in honor of the retirement of Police Captain Stephen Williams. Captain Williams started his career as a volunteer police explorer for the city of Turlock in 1988. He became a full-time police officer in 1994, quickly promoted through the ranks to the position of K-9 handler, to, uh, Masso and Basi in 96, field training officer in 98, corporal in 2001, sergeant in 2006, lieutenant in 2008, and was ultimately promoted to serve as captain in 2012 from there on. Captain Williams served as the acting chief, as well as interim police chief, from February 2021 to August 2021. Captain Williams received several commendations, some included how he handled a 911 hang-up from a young caller reported, reporting a molest, his molestation, if you will, his participation on a disturbance call with shots fired, and a document he prepared outlining comprehensive strategies designed to assist auto theft on ongoing basis. Captain Williams was the recipient of the Excellence Award while serving in the K-9 unit on two different occasions, as well while serving in the Patrol Bureau, and while he was in field training programs. Captain Williams received a special certification of recognition from the chief for his dedication, management, and commitment to the radio and CAD RMS project. Captain Williams pivotal in big projects for the city and the Turlock Police Department. The radio project was a monumental job, and he saw the project through to its completion. Captain Williams has committed more than three decades serving the Turlock Police Department and the city of Turlock. He embodies a strong worth, work ethic, wow, I've read too much. He embodies a strong work ethic and loyalty to the police department, as well as the Turlock community. Whereas the city council, by this recognition, wishes to express its greatest appreciation to Captain Williams for his meritorious service, loyalty, and dedication to the city of Tur, Turlock. Now, therefore, I, Amy Bublack, um, as the mayor, and on behalf of the council and the citizens, wish him a sincere time in his retirement, and hope he comes back to use his 960 hours with us. Thank you.
He better be.
He better be watching. All right, both of them. It's hard when people want to leave, but there's a point where I appreciate the, the service, and I know that they have a life to live. If nothing else, we got out of COVID was that there, there are other things in life to, to focus on. And finally, there's presentation, Self-Help Enterprises' presentation, that's not mine, is it? Please tell me I'm not doing this. Good, because I can't even read anymore.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and council members, um, my name's Tom Colashaw. I'm the president and CEO of Self-Help Enterprises, and I'm here tonight to share, uh, some good news about a, a long-awaited, uh, project here that's exciting for the city, and, uh, be able to share the, the news about that, and the information, and answer any questions that you may have. Um, and, uh, it is a project called Montana Estates. Where am I pointing? Other than the wrong direction. Oh, there you go.
Right here.
Okay. Uh, but first, before I talk about the, uh, specific project, just a little bit about Self-Help Enterprises. We're a nonprofit organization, we've been around since 1965. Um, we pioneered something that's, uh, come to be known nationally as, uh, mutual self-help housing, and more on that in a moment. Uh, we work throughout the San Joaquin Valley of, of California. And we also develop, uh, affordable rental housing, we preserve single-family housing, uh, we do infrastructure development, uh, and we also do housing counseling and education, and home bo, homebuyer education, excuse me, and also of late, emergency services, mostly around the drought. Uh, all told, we've been involved in, uh, the creation or preservation of over 15,000 units of, uh, affordable housing. So, the good news is, if you're a homeowner, uh, in Turlock, uh, your home has probably increased in value over the last year by somewhere between 20 and 30%, probably closer to 30%. That's not great news, however, for first-time homebuyers, folks who don't yet own a home. Um, so Montana Estates, our project, is one answer to the many housing challenges that the city has. We know you, there is a homeless, a challenge, uh, to house homeless people. We know there's a challenge, uh, for affordable rental housing. But, uh, we also, uh, believe there's a serious, uh, lack of affordable housing, uh, for a single-family homeownership. So this project, Montana Estates, has been a long time coming. Um, to my amazement, we actually, uh, there was, uh, a, a nonprofit that had formed to do this project, that unfortunately had a difficult time, um, and began failing in about 2005. The city had, uh, made a CDPG loan, uh, to, uh, assist them in purchasing it. They came to us and said, "Are you a possible resource?" One thing led to another, we ended up entitling, uh, the subdivision in 2007, and we were literally breaking ground, uh, with then, the then-mayor, uh, in 2008, when the recession hit. Um, the, just the location there is right at West and Montana. It's a single cul-de-sac with, uh, we did a density bonus at the time, as I recall, and, uh, so the lots are, are, uh, about 4,500 square feet, some of them, but it's a single cul-de-sac. Um, and we developed it, put in the streets, curb gutter, sidewalks, everything required by the city, um, at that time. So, um, just to stay there for a minute, so what's happened since then? Well, we had a recession, um, and then the state ran out of money. Uh, so, uh, for the programs that we, we rely on to make a project like this work, and so it wasn't until about 2017, 2018, when some new bond funds were passed by the state of California for affordable housing projects of this type, that we were able to compete for funds, we were able to eventually, uh, get funded. So now, we're, we're, we're ready, ready to go. So what is mutual self-help housing? Um, very quickly, uh, it is a, has a significant labor requirement. So each homeowner, homeowner has to put in, their family has to put in 40 hours per week. The way this will work, we'll have two phases. The first phase will be 11 families, they're recruited. 11 families start their homes all in the same day, they're all permitted, and nobody moves in until all those 11 homes are done. We provide onsite construction supervision to help them, uh, do everything that's necessary to complete the homes. Um, that down payment, or that sweat equity, um, becomes their down payment, and that's essential for the, the financing part of this. We do contract out, subcontract out, certain elements of construction. Um, they include plumbing, sheet rock, the actual roofing, stucco, and a couple other, other of the items. But it is a major work program, and most families who build a self-help home, uh, put in about 1,500 hours, uh, during the course of, uh, nine to 11 months to complete the homes. That's real families, uh, really on the roof, uh, doing trusses. Uh, it's a recently completed home. Um, the benefits of the self-help housing program go way beyond, uh, simple housing. Um, first of all, it's long-term, sustainable homeownership. And what I mean by that is that families are prepared for homeownership, they get good homebuyer education, they get loans that they can afford, that are stable, that don't change over time, there's no trickery in these loans. Um, and it is, truly becomes a wealth-building opportunity. We know this because we've assisted over 6,500 families in the valley do this program over the years, and we've seen families thrive, once they have a, a stable, uh, environment, and they can, um, actually begin to build wealth, um, like other Americans. Um, and they also, the mutual self-help program, because they're relying on each other for labor, um, it actually builds a great neighborhood, and with a real stake in the community. How do people, people qualify? Really, three, three basic things. They have to be below or within 80% of the area median income for St. Anselus County. They have to have good credit and stable income, because they have a first mortgage that they have to make payments on, just like any homeowner. And they, lastly, and the only really unique thing about the program, is that they are, uh, have to have the ability and willingness, uh, to build the homes with their neighbors, and actually put in that significant labor, labor commitment. So, um, I didn't warn you, but there will be some math, uh, here, because I just wanted to walk you through a quick affordability scenario. Uh, our projected costs, um, are, are there. Um, and we expect the value, this may change with final appraisals, uh, to be somewhere between 380,000 for the three-bedroom plans, uh, 405,000 for the four-bedroom plans. Um, and we expect families to be able to earn about $50,000 as their down payment through, uh, credited to them for their, their labor. But, um, there is, uh, a significant gaps that we have to fill, uh, for affordability here. If you look at the, because we will sell the house for what it's valued at, we'll credit the sweat equity, just to bring you through the three-bedroom, uh, scenario. Um, the hard cost to finance becomes $330,000. We have, uh, we will get a deferred, we just got approval for a deferral on the, um, county, um, fees, uh, because this is affordable housing, so people will, uh, not have to finance that portion. And we secured 100,000, $100,000 deferred secondary loans from the state of California through the Cal Home Program. So that reduces the, the remainder to borrow, uh, from a first mortgage for that family at about $222,000. Quick equation there, that gets you to a house payment of principal, interest, taxes, and insurance of about $1,450. The annual, that, what that takes is an annual income to qualify of about $58,000. So that's, as it stands, the, the minimum, uh, income to, to qualify. We think in terms of eligibility windows, because we have a, a ceiling of, of the incomes that we conserve in this program. That gives you the snapshot of a two-person, three-person, through a six-person household, of what incomes you can earn, and qualify for this program. Um, and that's, ranges from $45,000 to $66,000 for a family of six. The eligibility window right now is a bit of a problem. We need additional subsidy. Um, as you can see, the, a two-bedroom, I'm sorry, a two-person household would, would not be able to, currently, with that scenario, be able to, to qualify. Gets a little bit be, better as the, the house size, household size goes up. So, we'd like to widen the eligibility window, and we're seeking other, um, subsidy sources. Um, we will be paying, repaying the, um, CDPG loan that's been on this property for over 15 years, um, of $140,000. We, we have understood from staff that there, there may be difficulty reusing that money in this program, but we think you, once it's repaid, we think you can redeploy it, um, as, as secondary financing in a different form to this, uh, to the, the families that, uh, would qualify in this, in this project. We also understand that the city is no longer, um, the administrator of the home program, or the home consortium in, uh, St. Anselus County. Um, but we would, um, seek your support in us, uh, being able to utilize some, some of those funds as well. With an additional, just a snapshot of if we could get a, an additional $40,000 worth of subsidy, average subsidy per unit, we can substantially increase the windows of eligibility, uh, to, uh, to that, that kind of scenario right there. Um, which is a much more comfortable place. It will provide homeownership, uh, opportunities for a, a broader segment of, uh, Turlock's population. So, we are excited to move ahead, uh, with this project, and, um, we would, uh, really appreciate any, anybody who calls, that you can direct them to us, because one of the things that we're able to do is, uh, families who call us, we can help them ascertain what their credit situation is, we can help them rebuild their credit, and those kinds of things. Um, we will be, be building in two phases, so if somebody comes to us and is not immediately eligible, they might be able to be eligible in the next six months or so. But these are 22 units that, um, uh, you can add to the, um, uh, the accomplishments of the city in terms of affordable housing, because these will all be below 80% of area median income. We're thrilled to finally be, uh, in a position to start, uh, recruiting for this project in earnest, and, uh, we, uh, would hope that you would support this effort. Thank you very much, and I'm available to answer any questions.
So, you're already working with our staff on this, correct?
Uh, we, yes, but there hasn't been a specific, um, there hasn't been a specific contribution since the initial CDPG contribution to the project. So, yeah, we've been talking off and on for years, and at one point, we were trying to secure, uh, home funds, and we know that that scenario has changed. Um, so, yes, I've been talking to Maria Ramos most, most recent, most recently about this.
Okay, so you'll continue with Mr. Wilson and, and Ms. Ramos to figure out what they can bring forward for us to look at, right?
Fantastic. That's great.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, item nine C. Right, nine C, because ice cream oak barrel closes at nine. The ladies told me, I know what's up. All right. Ms. Van Gelder, do you know that the oak barrel closes at nine?
I didn't, but good to know.
Yeah. Do they, do they use the Rad card? Uh, we need to know, right? We should be doing some props out loud here for them. All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you so much. Um, it's my honor and pleasure to present the item, uh, to you regarding a potential change to the aesthetics in our downtown. Uh, recently, um, our wonderful Turlock Garden Club, uh, made a proposal to the Downtown Property Owner Association about potentially changing the color of the downtown pots in the core. I've got a picture up on the screen, um, just to kind of give you an idea of what they currently look like. Um, this was the plan at the initial sort of design, um, exercise that was done by the community. Um, and the reason we've brought it before you tonight is because, uh, while there's really nothing in the downtown design guidelines that prevents a color, or change in color, we wanted to make sure that the public had an opportunity to evaluate and weigh in, and obviously, we wanted to make sure that council was in support of this. So, um, that's a little background. We do have about 40 planners throughout the downtown, and twice a year, our wonderful volunteers come in and work their magic, uh, to make them beautiful for us. Um, and so what they're proposing is that we, um, allow them to stain the pots this sort of rust brown color. Um, it's aesthetically, I think, very much in line with what we already have going on in the downtown. And most importantly, it's supported by the Turlock Downtown Property Owner Association, who through our contract, uh, between the city and them, they, um, are responsible for maintaining the pots. Um, if this was to be approved, uh, the downtown property owners would be responsible for all the costs associated with changing the color. Kind of covered that. Um, if, is, are there any questions about anything? It's pretty straightforward. Um, I, I know we have some eager representatives that, here, that would like to share some thoughts. Carol, would you like to come up? Lori?
Lori.
Okay, come on up.
And then you can take another picture, Lori.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Uh, Lori Smith, tonight, I'm representing the Turlock Downtown Property Owners Association. Um, the garden club has been asking for this for literally years, huh? Um, and we love our garden club, and we want to keep them happy. So, I think, you know, the, the Turlock Downtown Property Owners unanimously supports it. Um, I, I like it, and it'll really make those plants really pop, so, hope you support it. Thank you.
Came all the way, come on, ladies, this is it.
Well, I'm Carol McRoberts, and I would like to just say, ahead of time, I hope I can thank you for all your support. Uh, the Turlock Garden Club does it once a month. It's a win-win situation for the city of Turlock, for the downtown association, and for the garden club. We love it. I really want to thank Lori for helping get this going, and kudos for Allison getting it to you. it to you. So on behalf of the Turlock Garden Club, we thank you and hopefully you'll support this. Thank you.
Well, it's open to the public, anyone wishing to, to speak on this item? Remember, there's a crew over here that might get mad if you oppose it. Mr. Bridegroom, you got the guts? Come on. Here we go.
Oh, that's your own Carol, Mr. Bridegroom.
No, he's like...
I'm pretty sure these green thumbs are nothing to mess with over here.
Okay, remember, I'm a former boy. But that doesn't mean that I really had a green thumb. No, I, I have no problems with this. I support this. The only thing that I, being the bugger knows that I am, that I would ask is, why does this have to take so many years? Why does it have to come to the council? If the garden club likes it and the Downtown Property Owners Association like it, I have faith in, I have faith in Allison, that she can properly represent, I'm sorry, Director Van Gelder, that she can properly represent the city, why can't we just leave the decision up to her? Kind of streamline the process so it doesn't take years, doesn't take council time? That's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this? All right, we'll bring it back. I think Mr. Bridegroom is so that they get an opportunity to be thanked and get props for doing what they do every month for the last however many years. They started all when they were about five or six, I heard, and there we are. So we, we thank you for doing that. You know, I'm sure we could have just gone on consent and we could have just washed right over it, but it's important that we appreciate you for what you do and we'll see what happens with this vote here.
I just want to take an opportunity as well to thank you for all of the work you do to make sure that our beautiful downtown is the beautiful downtown that we all enjoy. And I think that I also would get in a little trouble with my own grandmother, Marie Babbitt, who are part of, a part of the, of the, of the garden club, a vivacious 90-year-old woman who is still doing, just leading the charge and I hope to embody that life and that, that heart that's for community service that all of you guys employ. So thank you so much for everything and thank you for the continuous just, just care that our city enjoys because of your hands. So thank you so much.
Echo the sentiment, no way I'm going to disagree with this group of ladies here. I'm going to echo Ron, if the people want it, we shouldn't stand in the way of it, we shouldn't even be in the process of approving it. I'd love to honor you guys on a regular basis, but as, as much as possible, I'd love it if we weren't even involved in making decisions for what's in the best interest of our people. When we got a group of community leaders like yourselves that want something, I wish you could just mobilize without, I, I am sure this is a very exciting evening for you all and, but I would love if you guys could do what you want with this community without even coming before us today.
Yeah, gorgeous. It's going to be beautiful. I want to know when you're staining those pots, because that's something that I would love to do with you. So on that note, I move to approve.
Definite second. I don't know how you ladies do it, but our downtown, I think, puts all the other local area downtowns to shame. You guys do an amazing job. I second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to not do it? No, I'm just kidding. To do it? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Duback?
Yes, it's a 5-0. Ladies, thank you so much. Plenty of time to get to wherever you need to be. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Moniz and Vice Mayor Franco. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor. So as a lot of you know, in June of 2021, I was tasked by the mayor to chair the Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness in Turlock, along with Vice Mayor Franco. And the Vice Mayor has been a very big, tremendous help to me and very supportive in this role, especially given the fact that the mayor asked us to run this ad hoc without using staff time in an effort to preserve our city resources and recognize the staffing shortages that we have at City Hall. And so this proved to be very challenging, but the Vice Mayor and I did manage to pull that off with two small exceptions, one of which was I had to drag our poor finance director into a phone conference to make sure that we could facilitate funding for our local nonprofits. And of course, the second exception being our city attorney, who for obvious reasons has to approve what we're trying to accomplish in here tonight. It is no secret, Turlock has been very forthcoming about the case law of Martin versus City of Boise, which is the source of the issues that cities all across the West Coast are now facing. You can drive up and down Highway 99 or Interstate 5 anywhere between Northern and Southern California and you can see countless amounts of homeless encampments. And I believe that Turlock has already passed the encampment milestone and that's thanks to our former city manager, Mr. Gary Hampton, and our current city attorney paving the way to make it possible for us to get our encampments cleaned up and improve the living conditions for our unsheltered's. So now we're looking into, moving into the direction of addressing the very serious underlying triggers and circumstances of homelessness, which is primarily mental health illness and substance use disorders. And so for us to be able to effectively and compassionately help those that are suffering from homelessness, we absolutely have to address the underlying root cause. We can't just keep putting a Band-Aid on it and handing out a meal or handing out anything. We have to address the underlying root cause and that's what we're trying to do. Personally, I've been feeding the homeless since I was 14 years old. I've operated the soup kitchen at my church down here on South First Street for the last 26 years. Some of you may know, my parents are the pastors of that church. And I have seen firsthand, for more than 30 years now, what the homeless experience is, how they feel, how they're perceived by members of the public, and how some of their actions and behaviors affect the surrounding public community. And so there's lots of facets to these folks, but they're human beings just like we are and, and I'm, we really need to take a compassionate approach with these folks. So this evening, we are looking at how we can, as a city as a whole, effectively serve the homeless by overcoming the challenges involved with our unsheltered community, creating a legislative platform to reverse the mistakes of state and federal governments as they relate to the unsheltered, finding the right path from shelter to housing, identifying disfavored approaches to homelessness and making sure that they are discontinued, maintaining local community standards by enforcing our own TMC ordinances, addressing behavioral health needs while putting a focus on the West Side, which is my district, because everybody sitting in this room knows or should know that that's where the bulk of our homeless folks reside, okay? And then preventing additional homeless by meeting the urgent health, health needs of our vulnerable populations and by supporting Legacy Health Program for respite care and homemaker services for our economically challenged families, which again, 73% of those folks are in my district. So I have an eight-page staff report, I'm sure you all read it. And I just want to, going forward, I want to operate on the premise that this homeless plan is going to be a living plan. Gary Hampton taught us that with our budget document. This is not something that I want to just put forward and then, okay, this is it, and then we walk away and not look at it. It's, it's critical that we keep tabs on this plan, we monitor what is working and what is not working, so that we can adjust and adapt accordingly and make change if we need to. Because folks, if there's one thing I've learned over the last eight months, there is no one-size-fits-all to this approach. And as my staff report says, there is no silver bullet magic fix for this. And, and the resources involved and the, the meetings and the efforts and the input, the Vice Mayor, I know is as grateful as I am for that. We also have Mr. Jeffrey Lewis here this evening, who is on hand. He can answer any questions and I'm also more than happy to answer any questions and I know the Vice Mayor is too. So with that, who wants to go first?
Do you have questions for your colleagues?
I want to acknowledge and thank you guys for the work that you put into this. I know I've been chomping at the bit to get, to work on this, so I know, one of the unfortunate things with politics is every two years, we have a turnover of a council and sometimes it feels like we're resetting on things that we're at the goal line on or, you know, where we feel that there's meaningful, meaningful progress already underway. So, you know, at no point did I intend for you guys to think that I didn't want you, didn't want us to get to a point where we had a plan and I don't want success from what comes from this ad hoc, because at the end of the day, you know, I'm, I'm looking at what is put forward here, there's, you know, overwhelming consensus on the, the general trajectory of what we're looking at. And I think, you know, very appreciative of the, the work that went into it.
Is there a question?
No. Oh, wait. How are you guys? No, okay.
All right. Questions?
Yes. Questions? But also just thank you so much for the, the effort and the clear amount of attention and focus that this, that this staff report has, has brought, or this report from the ad hoc that is, that is just, it's so well-written and I just really appreciate that it really takes the holistic picture of the issues that we deal with at a local level and really pinpoints where we've done our research on the city side, where organizations such as Legacy Health has done on their side as well, and the, the efforts that are currently happening with our nonprofits across our city. And really, the lack of support and mistakes that our state government and federal government have really caused us to have to really get the, feel the brunt of this issue. As reading through it, I really appreciate a lot of the suggestions and would love to see them fruition. I appreciate calling it a living document. The only point of, of data or I guess contention is the talk of that, the, the, the family style, like that there's, the more, there's not homeless individuals, there's more homeless individuals and not really family-style arrangements.
What page are you on?
Oh, I have it in my notes. But basically, and I agree, I agree, the ones that we see, we see more, you know, individual adults, yeah, that are a part of this unsheltered population.
Two-parent families, I think is...
Oh, number four, page five.
Yes. So, so I, I just wanted to kind of, I wanted to hear a little bit more into that of, in terms of what, I know that we maybe don't see them walking around the street, but I think there is a lar, a large amount of families that are either on the brink of homelessness or are homeless. We just don't see them, maybe because they're living out of cars or they're living in a different situation. So I understand that maybe if we don't see them, we don't have the data to really, to really support initiatives, to support that population just yet, but I just am, I'm just kind of apprehensive to say that they don't exist, or they, they don't exist as much as the other one. So I just wanted to hear your, kind of your stance on that.
Sure. Mr. Lewis, you want to come on up?
Does he ever?
They get in trouble because they don't have a mask on.
You're not required if you're vaccinated?
My wife is probably watching, so I'm always required.
That's an amazing mask. It looks like you're not wearing one.
Yes, it's see-through. Mayor, Mr. Wilson, welcome. Members of the City Council. The Councilmember Larson, let me just speak to the family issue you raised. The concept actually was raised a few years ago when we did the initial homeless report. We spoke about families, that, the unhidden numbers of, the hidden numbers of people who were families that people didn't see. You will see them today in Motel 6 and a number of other institutions that they're hiding in, because that's the only place they have. This concept is designed for us to do two things. One, to determine how large a family-first population we have, how many families are really on the verge of homelessness, that one paycheck away. So we would work with the city to figure out what, what that number really is and who they are. But the second issue is to recognize that when we talk about the unsheltered population, you know, and I'll speak selfishly here, you have to put a priority on some part of that population. I put a priority on those families. Never want to see a family homeless, regardless of what size they are, who they are, or anything, particularly when we have children. We've all seen the examples, you know, on Broadway and elsewhere, where families are living in cars. The father might be in a car because their mother's in a shelter and their mother's with the kids in the gospel mission. The father can't get in there. He couldn't get a bed at daycare, et cetera. So that's the whole concept behind this, is to really understand the breadth of the problem, to tackle the problem, not just from a, from a paycheck perspective, but to recognize what are the multifaceted needs of those families, so that we can attack it as a whole person or a whole family. And that's the idea.
Allow me to follow up, if that's okay? Yeah, I appreciate that. And it is clear after that, that assessments made, that there really are more individuals and adults and maybe single parent with a child, even if those aren't, we don't see a lot of those, that we will find out. We will do the research, we will, we will assess the situation today. But, so I guess my, but there are no recommendations in terms of hard answers or hard suggestions to fix that gap in service that we have in our city, because like you just mentioned, the shelters that we have are gender-specific, adults-only, and they don't allow that family to really stay together. This is suggesting that there just might not be them, there, there's not, might not be in our city right now. And that's where I'm trying to find the...
Yeah, so they're not as, they're not going to be as visible as other individuals who are homeless or unsheltered, except when you look in a institution like Haven, where you're going to find a lot of women who've escaped with their children, with their shirt on their back. And they've been battered or abused or whatever, and they walk out of that house with typically no insurance card, because the spouse or partner in this case controls the insurance card. They walk out with whatever's in their purse, which is minimal, because they don't have the resources and that person controls all that. So we know that there are some numbers of these individuals, many of whom end up in Haven, which is probably one of the greatest programs we have in these communities. But we don't know how many they really are. We know from an unsheltered perspective, and single individuals are really a much larger population and have been for years. So this effort is designed to uncover how large of a number that really is and to begin to project on an ongoing basis of how pronounced that problem is. It exists, how extensive it exists, nobody really knows. That's why the objective here was to really say, let's recognize there's something, it may not be as big as other problems, but let's find out the extent of it.
I don't know who this would be for, but on, I, Part 7, on Page 9, talking about the urgent healthcare needs of our most vulnerable, contracting for, like a mobile health resource for our vulnerable population. I imagine that in best-case scenario in which we are working to get these individuals access to all of the resources available to them, healthcare coverage would be granted to them and that most of what would be provided by this healthcare provider would be reimbursed or would be covered through healthcare coverage, that it would be provided by the state. Is that not necessarily...
No, not necessarily. So what happens is, many of these people don't enroll in Medi-Cal, so there has to be funds to cover the costs for that population. Even if they're eligible for Medi-Cal, it is like pulling teeth to get them enrolled, for whatever reason, it's a very personal reason, they don't enroll. So these funds are dedicated to cover those expenses. The second part is, many of these unsheltered, part of the unsheltered population has a pharmacy need, pharmacy need in terms of behavioral health meds, diabetic meds, whatever the medication may need. And, you know, when they're not enrolled in a program like Medi-Cal, somebody has to pick up the cost. So we've established a charitable pharmacy in Livingston that takes care of the uninsured, but there's always a gap in coverage in terms of the kinds of medications, and that's what some of these funds pay for as well.
So with, with the implementation of something like this, would the, the priority, the, the first go would be to try and get them enrolled into all of their, so, all of the eligible services and then those that opt out would be covered by the safety net?
Yes. The other aspect of this is, you know, first and foremost is veterans, because we, we know we have an unsheltered veterans' population eligible for phenomenal benefits, but either don't know it or aren't enrolled for whatever reason. So we prioritize, you know, various populations to get them enrolled. It's just that tough task to get them to say yes.
Or fill out a form.
Yeah. I mean, quite honestly, here's what happens. The charitable pharmacy that we have in Livingston is for any person who's uninsured with an income up to 400% of poverty. So that's a pretty, that's a pretty significant amount of money. They qualify, but they won't fill out the one-page form for a variety of reasons. It's, you can blame ICE for part of this, you can blame any number of things for this. But there are a number of people, even though they're uninsured and they know they can get the meds for free, will not finish that form regardless of what language it's in. So we've done a program in English, Spanish, Punjabi, Mong, et cetera, and, you know, the penetration has been minimal. So we keep at it, but it's... at it, but it's, it's heartbreaking.
The other thing, absolutely recognize the need to expand the reach of behavioral health outreach efforts. Uh, one of my concerns is that what we're looking at is potentially contracting with First Behavioral Health Urgent Care, love what they provide for the community. Uh, but I, my hesitation is a concern of creating redundancies between potentially local provide, local service provider and then coordination with our county health, county behavioral health. Um, how can we ensure that, you know, what we're, what we're investing here locally, uh, cannot be delivered by, you know, better coordination with, uh, behavioral health at the county level?
You know, I wish what you're saying were actually true with respect to the county. The county covers those individuals' behavioral health challenges who are moderate to severe. A lot of the people who on the west side and throughout the city have mild to moderate conditions. That's not part of the county program. So, First Behavioral Health is here in Turlock, as, as you know. And, uh, we have about 10 staff now, most of whom are bilingual, uh, serving throughout the community. So, they would, you know, set up another office in the west side, uh, be able to deal with, you know, people from, like, those communities and to address that. There is no overlap because of there's, the county doesn't address this. So, this is a, an ongoing service that our foundation started about three years ago. Uh, and now we've grown it to the point where they've just won a, a large federal grant to combine with La Familia out of the Bay Area. So, the one thing I can assure you is there's no duplication. If there's anything, it's going to be new services for a lot of people in their native language.
Councilmember Larson?
Thank you. Um, there's, there's no way, or I, or not that I've seen, of a city being able to step in and holistically providing the mental health services to this population. It, there's not enough money, there's not enough staff, there's not enough capacity. Um, and the report does a really good job talking about the, really the step back that the federal government did and different state departments did. And we, we know that that is a huge underlying condition to those that, that, that struggle with, um, being unsheltered and can't find the stability within, with, with being sheltered, jobs, things like that. Um, and we just started to touch on it. And I know that in the report as well, we talk about our legislation, legislative efforts that I think are very key right now to put pressure on those agencies, those government layers of government, that it really is their job and they do have the capacity to create these facilities, these state-funded facilities, or at least provide the foundation for the private sector to step up in a really meaningful way that could actually alleviate this. So, my question to you, being an, being our local expert in this field, um, is there any sign of the state or federal government being willing to step up in a more meaningful way to create that long-term mental health need? And how, is there any, I know the next question would be, well, where is it going to go? Very valid question. But where, where does the, the California, how, how do the local politics really work for us? Because it's not, I don't believe it should be the city of Turlock's job to do so, or even the county. I don't think, I don't know if they even have the capacity to do so as well.
This is a systemic problem that started, uh, many governors ago and has continued since then. Uh, and the federal government walked away from this. The Congress walked away from it. Uh, local politicians in many cases walked away from it. The idea here is to come up with a Band-Aid, because this, this aspect of it is a Band-Aid. The focus on children and families, whatever the size, whatever kind of family it is, and then to turn to the unsheltered, single men and single women. Um, the state of California is spending a lot of money in a variety of different ways on treating, creating mental health solutions that people believe will work or may not. Um, we've used charitable dollars like venture capital, investing very specific solutions that we believe we can use in Turlock that will work. And the long-term gap is how long will it take the state government on a bipartisan basis and the federal government, uh, to really decide that mental health is a priority, uh, which to date, they have had a lot of rhetoric about, but very little action. Uh, the one thing you can say about, uh, the attempt by, you know, various mental health programs at the state level is they're trying to figure out what to do and how to do it. And every behavioral health director across Stanislaus and multiple counties is trying to figure that out. Thankfully, uh, you've had a wonderful, uh, behavioral health director in Stanislaus County and an equally capable and very capable, one in Bursad County, uh, who's, who's also a clinician. So, between those experts and Manuel Jimenez, who is our president of the First Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center, we have the fortunate brain power to sort of figure out, oh, what can we do? And then have that conversation with elected officials, as you know, as they're running for office, to sort of ask those important questions about, well, if you're going to spend this much, we can have a, we can do an ROI of this much, are you willing to partner with us? And we'll find out.
Any other questions before we open it up?
Uh, the one, this, I feel like it covers a big chunk of it. The one, the one piece that, um, I don't see it speak to is the workforce development and job placement. Um, can you guys maybe speak to how we are going to incorporate getting some of these folks off, off the streets, um, and into permanent work?
Sure. Stanislaus County workforce development is going to end up being an integral part of this, but I think we all know that we have to address the mental health and the underlying substance use disorder issues first. Um, because without that, you know, the, um, the workforce development program in our county has been amazing. Um, and even our Department of, Stanislaus County DOR, Department of Rehabilitation, puts, for example, convicted felons back to work that nobody will hire because they have a felony on their record. Workforce development does this for our unsheltered folks, but they still have to be able to get through a job interview and fill out that job application. And, and again, it goes back to, we have to, uh, we have to address the underlying root causes of homelessness, folks. Nobody in their right mind wants to live in a bush in, in urine and feces in 30-degree winter weather. Some, something is wrong there. And, and nine times out of 10, what we have found, it's either the substance use disorder or it's underlying mental health. So, the goal here, by implementing all of this, is let's get the, um, mental health or substance use handled. Then, we morph it into tapping into those other county resources, such as the workforce development program and getting them going from there.
The other thing to think about from a workforce development perspective is the population that you need to help unsheltered population. So, last year, we launched a program called the Linda M. Stumer Behavioral Health Fellows, where we're paying for masters and PhD students to go to behavioral health programs. They graduate and they have to come back in terms of the Turlock area and others, and give back three years once, once licensed. So, they have to get licensed and then they owe us three years. You know, we're hoping to add another four or five to that same group when we put the RFP out in a, next week or so. That is as important today as it was 10 years ago, probably more important today to help educate. But the other part of the workforce is our reality. The reality today is we have 500 Afghan families living in Turlock. You know, we have maybe one or two who speak that language. They come to here with multiple behavioral health challenges from a child to an adult. Uh, and we're trying to figure out how you begin to deal with that quickly from a workforce perspective. So, you know, it, I'm, I'm hoping, because I'll be happy to assist you in, in looking at this, how you can take an unsheltered population and get them through a system quickly. I'm not convinced the numbers are going to be as large as people think, because the question's going to be, do they really want to work? If we can give them that hand up and it's not a handout. But we, we owe them the opportunity to try. And that's my commitment to you to try.
Yes, Juan O. Christian?
One more question. I'm sure that, that if we have some, a question for the public as well, it would, it might mirror some of this, that we're talking a lot about putting efforts out there, putting, uh, we want to make sure we can measure it. Um, I know from, you meant, uh, we, the, the report talks about the, um, survey that was done in 2020 and it was clear that it was an issue for, for the everyday Turlock residents. They see it. It's, it's, it's something that is very, very important. So, I know that there are a couple, um, variables within that. Is it just going to be visual measurement? Is it going to be assessing the amount of individuals that are in our shelters? If, if they can succeed to transitional housing? The fact that they do enroll in, in government benefits, I believe would be a success. So, I guess my, I want to know if, how we're going to be able to articulate measurables to the population, to the, to the public.
So, Councilmember Larson, to answer that question, um, the, you know, the, my report makes reference to going to outside independent evaluators if we need to, because it's my goal, as long as I'm sitting in this seat, we're keeping tabs on every aspect of this plan. Because if, the minute we don't and the minute we don't watch something, it's going to go by the wayside because that's what happens in highly politicized issues. And I don't, that's the last thing we want to happen here. There's been far too much put out for this, to let it, to let it fail. And if we don't monitor everything, we risk failure.
We have an academic team that we work with. So, on, with, you can't do, you can't use what the county does and going to count people and try to get an accurate number. You have to verify. So, the responsibility for people like me and my colleagues is to come back with an ROI. You spend $350,000, the return on your investment is tenfold, fourfold, or zero. And why? So, that's one of the differences between how we operate and how others operate, because I have a, I have a fiscal responsibility and to make sure I come back and explain what works. The academics that we work with are the ones who really build the research tool. So, as that process were to grow, I will let you know. You're welcome, you're all welcome to sit in those meetings with these, uh, PhDs and listen to how they want to approach this. And if we can make, make it rain, it'd be great.
I think it's going to rain anyway, but yeah, thank you. Okay, before we open it, any other last questions? Okay, let's open it. I do have Amber Young.
Thank you for hearing me. Um, I'm here on behalf of the homelessness and the illegal camping. Um, we're outside of, um, Turlock. I mean, we're city of Turlock, but we have, um, homeless encampments that are back there, um, in our, in our orchards, in our driveway, behind our fields. They're, um, they're camping, they're dumping their waste in our field. Um, they're garbage, they're, um, they're trespassing to get to wherever they need to be. Um, we've, can, we've contacted Caltrans, the railroad companies, uh, the city of Turlock, Stanislaus County Police, um, to try to get something to get them out of theirs, to go to a shelter, to be somewhere. They're there with no license plates, no tags. Again, they're dumping in our orchards. They're riding through our orchards. Um, and we can't get them out. We have tried everything. We've been trying to do everything. I know that there's, there's beds open at the shelter, which is what the Turlock was supposed to do. They were not allowed to be camping if there was open beds, you know, in the shelters, but yet they're still left there. They've been there for three months, maybe even four. I mean, I don't know if you guys have been on Taylor Road, but they have a whole big encampment. You know, on the weekends, they're selling, you know, stuff outside of their camper and stuff like that. You know, as citizens, we're supposed to pay for a permit to sell things or do things. Or as citizens, we're supposed to pay our tags and have our license plates. And, you know, we have to sleep with one ear open all the time because these people are wandering through our backyards, through our orchards. Um, it's, it's crazy. It's, it's, it's a lot. Um, again, you know, it's just, it's just really frustrating that we can't get anybody, the police, the, the, anybody just to get them off the streets, to get them into shelters, to get them some help and to get them out of our backyard, because they're making a mess everywhere, anywhere you could think of. You know, you, you've seen where Woods Furniture used to be. They were all camped out there for a period of time. Now, they're on West Main, you know, up against the, the overpass. It looks like Skid Row down in LA. I mean, you know, you move one place or the other, we can't fence in our property because we're farmers. So, there's no way of, of fencing anything and, and keeping them out other than, you know, we put ties up or, you know, cables, but then they just come and they cut them. And, you know, not even to mention the drug trafficking that keeps coming back and forth through our fields. You know, they're ruining our, our drip systems, they're lighting cars on fire. I mean, there's a lot going on. So, I would hope that, you know, the city of Turlock would just hear us out and get us some help and, you know, get these people some help so that they can, you know, better themselves as well. But the RV camping that's going around, not just in our backyard, but in Turlock is, it's horrible. I mean, I know you guys have tried, I've know, I know that there's been efforts, but I mean, by, by international paper, I mean, you guys had to put a fence up to keep them out. So, I mean, we can't keep fencing everything in to get them, you know, help. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Shirley Mallard?
Thank you. Um, I've, I need to talk about what I came here for, except that you've touched on mental illness and listening to Mr. Lewis, I believe it's his name.
Yes.
Um, and I, so I don't, what I'm going to say, I don't want to take away from that issue, because I had four sons and two of them that suffered from mental illness. And one hitchhiked from San Diego to St. Louis when he was 18. He always had a job wherever he went, but that's what he did. And we were there for him. And we had, as his brother, the youngest of the four, um, would live homeless in San Jose. And he was getting mental health treatment if he had his home, but he'd go there and come back. So, I understand mental illness and the challenges. And I have to say, as parents and all that we did and all the money that we poured at it, we may have successes and we may not. And the one that hitchhiked to St. Louis is an, a registered nurse in LA. And the other one, we lost almost 20 years ago. So, I understand it and don't want to take away from what you're proposing and what you're trying to do within the city. I also want to say, my husband and I are four generations Turlock, and our boys were five. And, um, we are, Amber's our neighbor, across the road. But I'm here tonight because in the agriculture community, we are facing a major freeze right now. And so, my farmer neighbors could not come and represent themselves. So, I told them I would do the best I could. But where we are located, um, between my, what we have in property and my two neighbors that it is affecting is over 300 acres. It butts up to the railroad tracks at Taylor Road. So, we're east, we're west of the railroad tracks, east of the railroad tracks, then you find California 99, the Taylor Road on ramp and such. And as Amber alluded, in November was all, if you saw them taking the ramp off of Taylor Road, you saw the homeless, the RV parks, RV vehicles parked illegally. You would see multiple very fancy nice cars, and I addressed this with our board of supervisor, Mr. Chiesa. In two days, he got them out of there. But they moved across the street. So, I contacted the sheriff department because Mr. Chiesa said he worked with them to get it moved. They indicated that it was Turlock City. And so, if you're familiar, and so as Amber said, it's now Turlock City, the sheriff, it's, um, Caltrans and the railroad. We have four people and we do have this. So, they moved across the road and I contacted, when I found out it was Turlock City, I contacted the Turlock PD. As she said, there is no license plate, no tags. I happen to know for missing, renewing a tag on a pickup, it was $450 fine. And by law, I had to pay it. So, my main point that I wanted to say is that I think in all of this, if you have ever worked with anyone with mental illness or drug abuse, alcohol abuse, we become enablers. And we have to be very careful at how we enable. And right now, by not ticketing them for driving illegal vehicles and not registering their vehicles and dumping illegally, parking illegally, right now, they are parked in a triangle on Caltrans, but it's our property and they're having to use our road that we maintain to move our equipment and to farm. Or, that's one access. The other access is the canal. And they are, we're watching them. They go in and out from Washington Road to the canal, down the canal, to the back, and then they're parked. We know that they're taking their RVs in and out of there, because we were just there today, my husband and I, and they turned that RV around. And it's now backed in. And then, originally, it was pulled in. I've had a Caltrans worker call about three weeks ago, call me, because they had my number, saying, I can't, um, get in there. And I was sent here to clean it up. And I've told them to move, but they told me they have to have an authority tell them, and then they have 72 hours to move. And, um, so... And, um, so, no luck, but I drove this Caltrans driver, had to show him our private access to get in there. They were coming in at 3:30 in the morning on bicycles, and into our yards. I have them sitting in our orchard, just six rows in, from my home, in the orchard. They're cutting drip lines to get water, for, for whatever reason. So they're destroying property, they're dumping, okay.
Finish your thought, finish your thought. Thank you, thank you. I don't have any other cards, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, somebody leave, leave the notes here, I don't know. I want to speak in the regard to the report by the chair, and mayor, and members of the council, and the city manager. I think in page, page seven, part three, under there, we recommend the city manager to establish a city task force. We recommend that that task force be com, part of the citizens, and ex-homeless, or members of the homeless to be in that task, or that committee. I think it's important for understand what a few people talked today, or tonight, that way you have more senses of, little bit understanding of the homeless concept. And I thank you, Ms. Rebecca Monjes, for trying to understand the issue of the mental illness and drug addiction is one of the biggest. I worked for Stanley Laus County for Mental Health Alcohol Treatment Program for over 10 years, in San Jose 12, Santa Clara County, inpatient outpatient, and I'm a member right now of the board, board of the, uh, system of care of Stanley Laus County, and I'm very active in regard to the homeless community, to the whole county. But I think the report is very good in the sense of trying to do something, in the city, after Modesto, I think is the biggest city, they have more homeless than anybody else. But in page six, in page nine, part six, I think in regard to the concept, or the idea to have the, uh, the recommendation to work with the mental health program, I think is excellent, but at the same time, you're missing two parts. One is not only the bilingual, because a lot of people can go to school and learn to speak Spanish, but I think the council is the bilingual, but culture, we need that, and that report. And the same time, of the cultural competencies, I think is one of the biggest issue, and we have a lot of that, and even the mental health department is not too strong in regard to the bilingual, but culture, under the mandate, or the state mandate, say they have to have that, but still not too strong enough. And I think one of the biggest issues, the, the race and ethnicity equity, we don't have that, and this report don't reflect that, and I think it's time to do that, because we have, in this community, many cultures, especially in Turlock, we have over five or seven biggest culture, Portuguese, Spanish speaking, Mexican-American, you have the Syrian community, and the Hindu community, in, from Indian descent, so we have a lot of different culture that we have to be prepared and ready, because the homeless not have names or titles. Homeless is big. So I think it's one important item, is to see the improve, or the permanent, not task force, but permanent committee, the working in this thing to, to, only not only the short term, but the long term, to improve how the city going to do a better job in regard to the homeless, that's very difficult, almost, not to say impossible, because almost 80% of the homeless are between mental health and drug abuse issue. In regard to the training, you're right, you're very correct, Mrs. Monjes, and I like what Mr. Nostre said, uh, the, uh, development of task force to do the, uh, the work job development, or the manpower to help some homeless, is possible. A lot of the homeless are ex-professionals, a lot of, a lot of homeless have a lot of skills, but the problem is the mental issue and emotional, there's the control of behavior, and not allow to even to, to interview, or to apply for a job, or to fill it up the application. So in that process, we have to take step by step, or the alcoholic say, one day at a time. And I think that's not happening, and someday, I, I hope they happen that. So, I recommend very strongly these two issues. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Treewiler, come on up.
Yes, council staff and Turlock citizens, Milk Treewiler. I know that my sister is the expert on this subject, she's worked with it for 25 years or more, but I do have some comments. I'm gonna start with, "Does this report demonstrate a concern for our fellow human beings who are helpless?" That's very basic. "Does this report demonstrate a concern for our fellow human beings who are homeless?" They're fellow human beings. You're, people are already talking about them as they, like they're some foreign alien who doesn't belong here. They are us. They are us. And until we get that attitude and that perspective in mind, we're not gonna help anyone, because we're looking down at them, and they are us. To me, this just looks like a reprint of nuts, what's not working to help the homeless. There isn't anything new in here, there isn't anything in here that brings up anything that may possibly help the homeless. It's just kind of a bureaucracy. We're just turning this into a way of avoiding reality. We don't want to know what reality is. We want to pretend that these people are someone else. They're not us, they're not human beings, they're inhuman. And this is not the way you're gonna solve any problem. You're gonna solve a problem by recognizing them as you. And when you have that done, you can start working, you can start making progress. I actually presented some information here back probably six, eight months ago, when Captain Williams was here and working on this issue, and it would have been nice to hear from Captain Williams tonight, but again, we've lost another city employee. Hmm. Okay. So what that report stated was, that there is a successful way in helping the homeless. And what the lady was telling us was, that Housing First is the only program that works. I don't hear anything about housing. My sister tried to get what were called pellet homes for the homeless over here at the shelter. The city wouldn't allow it. What they were, were little houses, little, they were, I don't remember, 10 by 10 little houses. They had air conditioning units, they had heating units, I don't know all the details on it, but it would have been some way to get these people and help these people. If you don't bring these people somewhere, we're just running them around the country. It's actually very inhumane, and I'm shameful for the people who are supporting this kind of procedure. It doesn't work. So Housing First does work. And Modesto had a good housing program, it was called MOES, Modesto Outdoor Emergency Shelter. If we want to help the homeless, we need a TOES, a Turlock Outdoor Emergency Shelter. This would work. You have a place where these people can go, they have no place to go, they're camping in people's yards, they're camping on people's, they're all over the place, and we're just running these human beings around. How would you like to be these human beings tonight, out in the dirt, out in the fields, right now, tonight? How many people on this council know what it's like to be homeless? Yes, if you know what it's like to be homeless, then I'm really shameful of you, because that's ridiculous. If you're not helping these people at all, this is just bureaucracy, and it's not going to solve anything. So I hope that eventually, we will have some good solutions and some work, and I would like to speak with you, eventually on this subject. Maristertamit is my sister, so I know you know her very well. Okay, so that's my talk for tonight, and I do hope that we can somehow truly help the homeless, human beings, who are our cousins, our brothers, our sisters, and our family. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Counsel, mayor? I would just like to say, I went to Berkeley, and I saw their skate parks, they were lit up, uh, until 10 o'clock, I believe, at night, and I really liked it. And I'd like our skate park to be lit up as well, as well as our parks in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else seeing to talk about homeless?
Okay, um, kinda hard to know where to start. So, number one, thank you to the two of you, I know you've both put in a lot of time and effort, so, um, whether people agree or disagree, you know, we, we know that, thank you for all the effort that you did put in. I was a little surprised to hear that you really didn't interact with staff that much. I guess kind of one of the complaints that I and the public might have, is that a year ago, we were told that when we had the, um, homeless encampment emergency, um, that they were, that the city, the staff was gonna work on developing a long-term plan, and then after, during that 120 days, then when that 120 days was done, then you came up with the, um, ad hoc committee, and it took about eight months, or something like that, before we got the report here. So, we've been waiting for a long time, okay? I'm a little confused, are you actually proposing specific programs that you're gonna vote on tonight, or you're just making recommendations to the city manager? Okay. Okay, so, part of the questions that I had was, um, okay, yes, the $400,000 program with First Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center, I guess we'll learn more about that when that actually comes back as a program, um, but it, you know, that's for two specialists, full-time, for $400,000, that sounds like kind of expensive, for two employees. Think you already talked about whether or not the county could help on some of these issues, mental health issues. I did want to, I was surprised, very pleasantly surprised, by part number eight, where you especially talk about assisting families, caring for aging parents, spouse or partner with dementia or Alzheimer's. Yeah, that's a community that nationwide has really been ignored, and they suffer greatly. The people with dementia, Alzheimer's suffer greatly, their family members, their caregivers suffer greatly, and they did nothing, absolutely nothing. They didn't make bad decisions in their life, or anything like that, to end up in that position. So sometimes, when you go through something like that, you can get a little upset over how you can't get any help, but people who maybe made bad decisions in their lives are getting help all the time, okay? So, um, I'm not quite sure that this is something that the city should be involved in, but I'm glad to see that it's being considered and thought about, because I think that's a great need in our area. Oh, yes. Prevention. I don't think there was much, or unless I missed it, much in here talked about prevention. I think that that is something that is very important, because otherwise, we're just constantly, you're not solving a problem, you're just putting on a Band-Aid here, and a Band-Aid there, and the problem continues. I know that Kelly Nan Hibma, in, in her plan, talked about prevention, workforce development, and so on and so forth, for families that are, and individuals who are on the edge of homelessness. I would encourage you to try to add something along those lines to this, or else we just have an ongoing problem that will never be reduced and just grow in size. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Sure?
So, there's a misconception that, I think it's, in my opinion, it's wrong to assume that just because somebody lives like this, that they have mental illness, because they don't live like I live, they must be mentally ill. And truthfully, San Francisco did a study, so San Francisco's a lot more expensive than we are, and barely, over 50% were homeless by choice. And I have met people that were homeless by choice, and, so they don't have responsibilities, don't have to go to work, there's a lot of things they don't have to do, they're fed, they have shelter when they want it. So I just think it's a wrong thing to assume why people are homeless, that because they don't do what I do, they must be mentally ill. And, so I don't think that's true. And I also have to say that the city did this great job of cleaning up these huge encampments, and even the small ones, and, and, and I was really pleased with how they did it, and the compassion that they did it, but if we're gonna let the encampments pop up again and grow again, then all that work that was done so well at the beginning of the year was for naught, right? Because we'll just end up right back where we were. And there is room in the shelters, so that's the deal. You know, you can't just camp on somebody's land, you can go to a shelter, and we have room. So I think it's really important that we don't let these grow either in the city limits or right around our city, and I don't want to get, like, oh, it's not my job, they're just over the city border, I mean, let's just keep Turlock nice, and it's not like there's a, a border that everybody, I wouldn't know where exactly the border is. When I drive by, and maybe they're just over the border, it still looks like a Turlock issue, so. And I believe that, I believe in accountability and not enabling, and so, so there are laws in our country, and it feels like to me, in our state, and it feels like to me, that there's a law for the people that pay taxes, and there's this other sub-law for the people that don't. And, and I don't think it's right, I think everybody has to follow the same laws, and you have penalties when you don't follow the law, and I'd like to see us enforce those, the same law, so we can have compassion at the same time as having expectations for accountability. So, that's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Robert Puffer, city of Turlock. So we have a large plan, and it's a living plan, and it's not in specifics, because we don't have time for that quite yet, but it'll develop as it goes. And this plan- And this plan was laid out, much like a plan that was introduced a year and a half ago by two councilmen. That was forwarded on to city staff. And then got dropped. And so now, a year and a half later, we're back. It says that we're going to hire two licensed clinical social workers on number six of part one. How's that going to get paid for? On item nine of part one. It says, challenges are overwhelming. The committee recommends council allow the city manager to explore pilot programs with the county that establish best practices. It seemed to me a year and a half ago, when a previous plan was introduced, that there was a large amount of county money available. I have no idea if it's still available or not, but we may have missed the boat on that. I want to commend them on part two, on the legislative platform, for recognizing that Mr. Ronald Reagan in 1967 deinstitutionalized mental heal- health. It wasn't retrospect, my mom was working in social services in 1967 for the county and came home crying because she knew what was upcoming. On the right path to shelter and housing, I like what Mr. Treewiler had stated. It's one thing to go to an emergency shelter with room and cots and stuff like that when you're facing a hurricane, and it's going to be a short, relatively short period of time. If we want to get these people out, we have to get them their personal space. Why are they willing to live in a little tent? Because at least it's their personal space. On number four. There was one where he said recommends the city undertake a request for information process and potential use and funding of single-room occupancy units and effective approach. Contact Mr. Treewiler's sister. Number five, maintaining local community standards by enforcing local ordinances. Love it. Great job. I agree 100%. I don't care how bad you guys are off. Laws are law, and it would be very nice to see. I commend you on that. The number five, or number six, I'm sorry. $400,000 for two full-time behavioral professionals. Is that in addition to the two social workers? And it's $400,000 for the cost of this contract. Well, what's the length of the contract? Is this two years, one year? Where's the money coming from? And the only reason I ask that is because you have a figure there, so you should have at least had a thought of where the money's coming from. Number seven, preventing additional homelessness by urgent healthcare needs, same thing. Sounds great. Where's the $350,000 coming from? On part eight, the homelessness on the LHE program, he said the LHE is seeking a $200,000 grant, $200,000 grant. And it says that the foundation will match. What foundation? I mean, I'm sure it is one, it's not listed in part eight. And constant measuring of the valuation, I agree 100%, every six months, find out what's working, what's not. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else who hasn't spoken on this topic want to speak? All right, we will close public comment on this item, and you want to start addressing some of the
I got it all.
Great, let's do it.
Okay. Mr. Lewis, can you just please confirm for me that our Miguel was asking about our social workers or our mental health clinicians being bilingual?
Bilingual but cultural.
Yes, because I believe we have bilinguals, because I beat Mr. Lewis up on that quite a bit.
As you did, yes. So the, all the therapists are bilingual?
One is bilingual, one is bi-cultural.
Yes, so Right, so
You speak Spanish, you're bilingual, but not bi-cultural.
So the therapists are all bilingual, some are bicultural. Because it's a very hard to find bicultural therapists. We continue to educate them first and, you know, build a back bench. It's a very long process, but you're absolutely right.
Just stay there. Mr. Bridegroom's question, are we voting tonight? We are not voting tonight, sir. The motion on the agenda is to ask the council to accept the ad hocs report and plan. And then this guy right here needs to get to formulate everything and bring it back, hopefully at the next meeting in two weeks. And so that we can vote. And Mr. Puffer, that goes to one of your questions too about where's the money coming from? That's all got to be laid out specifically because we can't just blanket check, you know, $400,000 or $350,000 or $200,000. So that'll all be agendized separately. Mr. Reagan will take care of that going forward. Mr. Bridegroom also had a question about prevention, taking, and my response to that, and Mr. Lewis, you can add to this too, because I know you will have something very valuable and important to say. We deal, we're dealing with our most vulnerable because we know and we recognize that we have families that are one paycheck away from being homeless. And that's what some of this is designed to catch. We're not going to be able to catch 100% of them. Anybody that tells you that they can, they're not being straight with you. But please know that we recognize that and we are aware of that, and that's something, that's one of those things that have to be monitored as we go through this.
Absolutely correct.
Good answer. And I hope that answers your question, Mr. Bridegroom. Cheryl, I certainly hope that I did not imply to you that in order to be homeless, you have to have an underlying mental health disorder, because I didn't, I certainly didn't intend to come across that way. I just know that on our statistics here in Turlock, the bulk of our homeless individuals, and I'm not talking about our families that are a paycheck away, but I'm talking about our people that are currently living in bushes and on the streets or on the off-ramps of the freeway. When surveying those people, the vast majority of them are either substance use disorder or mental, mental health. And so I certainly didn't want to imply otherwise. And just so you all know, this right here, this nice three-inch binder, these are all of my sources, mine and Vice Mayor's, that are in this report that are cited. This book of data is what we're basing everything off of, and every source is cited on the last page of the report. The other thing I want to tell you is we're all very disappointed, at least I am very disappointed, that you have seen the encampments pop back up. But we need to talk about that for a second. And I want to point out to you, and if you think about it, you'll recognize that the encampments are mostly on the off-ramps of the freeway right now, or in Ms. Young or Ms. Mollard's orchard. And they are literally in a Caltrans right-of-way. So for the woman that got up and spoke earlier, so they're literally trespassing through her orchard and her private property to get to a Caltrans right-of-way. Now, why are they only in the Caltrans right-of-way, and why can't Turlock Police Department do anything about that? Let me explain. So we don't have believe me, we would love to have jurisdiction over the railroad and over the sheriff and over Caltrans, chief, correct me if I'm wrong. We would love to have jurisdiction all over all of those people because they're within our city limits, but we don't. And so Caltrans, the point-in-time count for 2022 starts tomorrow, and it's supposed to be completed by Thursday, okay? Caltrans has already communicated with us that they are not moving anybody until the point-in-time count occurs this year. It was supposed to happen a month ago, but our COVID cases in the county were spiking, okay? So it got pushed to tomorrow. After the point-in-time count occurs, Caltrans is going to come in and clean up all of their off-ramps. Vice Mayor and I both, well, we have another meeting scheduled on the 28th, we have another meeting scheduled with Caltrans. But we've already asked Caltrans, hey, we'll take it off your hands, we'll help you out. My police chief will gladly send his officers out there to clean this up because we've put so much effort into these encampments and cleaning them up. Caltrans says, oh, no, 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 don't you dare step into our jurisdiction. So our hands are tied. They're all, they're in the Caltrans right-of-way, they know that they're not going to be moved until after the point-in-time count, and we just have to embrace it until we can, we can deal with it accordingly. And so I hope that, I hope that explains that. And you know, you guys, I wish, I wish we could tell you every single meeting we've had and every phone call and every, you know, thing that's happened in the last eight months, because there's so much, and everybody has different questions. So we're, you know, we try to put as much information out as we can, so I really hope that helps you. The laws, you want our laws enforced, and part five in the staff report talks about that. This is a really important thing. The Boise Idaho case is the one that basically shut us down in being able to enforce municipal codes for camping and sleeping, or camping in a park and urinating in public and littering. The City of Boise case really restricted what the cities were able to do. And I know a lot of folks don't understand it, but part of this work that's gone on behind the scenes for the last eight months is making sure, and Mr. Petralakis has done a great job of this, is making sure that we are compliant with the Boise case law. Because if we go out and we're not compliant, and we want to go out and we want to cite somebody for camping in a park, now the city's in trouble and we have liability. Okay? And so this is the big controversy of the Boise case, as some of you may know, came from Governor Brown's executive order, which he wrote just before he left office, making it against the law for a city to cite a person for being homeless. Okay? So we're, we're having to navigate around the Boise case. I hope that we're going to be, that Turlock's going to be a trailblazer on that legislative platform to deal with the fact that that, that case had, when, when the, when the judges wrote that opinion in that case, they had no idea the domino effect and the repercussions and the ripples they were going to send through the West Coast. Just like Governor Reagan, when he shut down our state hospitals, he had no idea the repercussions that he was instituting by way of his order to do that. And that's what we're, we're left with to deal with here today. So we are getting there, we're almost there, and I fully intend that we will be able to enforce our municipal code sections so that we can, we can be a city of laws. Mr. Puffer, questions about the licensed clinical services, how are we paying for those? You should see that at the next council meeting, provided that Mr. Wilson gets them on the agenda. But like I said earlier, those will be agendized. I hope that answers it. Did we miss the boat on the county money a year and a half ago or two years ago? I don't know, I wasn't here, but I'm going to make this guy find out. Because I think your question is valid. And then law number five, part five on the enforcing the laws, I think you just heard my explanation to Cheryl. And Mr. Lewis, the contract for our social workers and our mental, mental health clinicians, can you speak to the length of those contracts for Mr. Puffer, please?
Typically, the length of the contract is a year. The clinician's salaries will range from $95,000 to $150,000, depending on their graduate degrees and their experience. It's not, it's, there's no cheap way to do it, and that's why. The additional, then you add benefits then, you figure a 33% factor for benefits. The office expense, and you're close to $400,000.
Did I miss anything? No.
Point clarification, manager, in regard to the issue of the community recommend to the city manager that contribute, remember
Will the committee will be comprised of a number of the committee?
Oh, yeah, I don't, you know, Miguel, we haven't had that conversation. I don't know, I'm certainly not opposed to that. I think it's a great idea. But we haven't formed that committee yet, but that's something this guy can, can take into account, into account when he and he wrote it down. No, this guy right here, Mr. Wilson. Yeah. That's okay. All right, did I, did I miss anything? Okay, Mr. Lewis, did you have anything you want to add?
The one provision that was referenced with respect to family care and long-term care services. Legacy Health Endowment is working on a comprehensive proposal for the, for the remainder of the year. The goal is to help families who have aging parents, caregivers providing those services, et cetera. It's a conversation the mayor and I started four years ago. And, you know, some things take a long time to percolate, but it's taken a long time to get there. We finally figured out the model. We're partnering with a for-profit and a nonprofit. We will be able to provide close to 100 to 200 people, families or individuals with a series of services ranging from respite care to skilled nursing services at no expense to them. We will build a database, so we know what's the cost of caring for somebody at home. So you go back to the issues of what happens. If you're a Medi-Cal patient, you have no costs. If you're a middle-class person and you're aging in place, like many of your parents have or are, you have severe expenses. And as that person gets older with one or more comorbidities or various limitations in activities of daily living, you need assistance. Today, those assistance you're paying cash for because Medicare doesn't cover it, your private long-term care insurance, if you have it and you can afford it, barely covers that. So we're looking at something which says make Turlock the first community in California, let alone the nation, to really dive into this and figure out how to do it. In this particular case, the foundation puts up $650,000 against the $200,000 we're asking the city to contribute to it. So it's a pretty fair it's a fair share. We put up two-thirds, you put up one-third. But the results are what are most important. And we find out in the number of people who are middle-class who get assistance will be extraordinary, and the stories that we get to tell afterwards will be even better. So it's a tribute to the mayor and I having this conversation four and a half years ago when she decided that she'd sit with me and I smoked a cigar and she coughed. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. There were two other statements, I guess, that I would like to address, one being what we didn't do two and a half years ago, and I had no control over the agenda at that time. It could have easily happened, but it wasn't on me. I had no control over the agenda. The other is, I hope not one of you has to be homeless in your life, but what I cannot have is people asking the question, have you ever been, and then judging you. That's not what we're here for, and I hope no one out there wants to be judging people for having to have been through that. So let's move forward with comments and see where we're going.
Thank you for everyone who participated in that conversation. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for all of your answers. I wish I could say that I would feel, I feel bad about putting you on the stop, but you're, you're great at it, and so I'm glad that people had you up here for amount of time to task you about how this stuff affects our community. Thank you so much to the, the members of the ad hoc committee. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Ramones, for, for addressing all of, and Vice Mayor Franco for addressing the citizens' concern from a political standpoint and how this process is going to go moving forward. I have a couple of comments that, that are essentially for, for Mr. Wilson to note when we're going forward with, when we're going forward with this initiative. One being that Stanislaw State has an emergency fund. It's, that they, they basically have like a basic needs grant for students that allow anybody who's food insecure or housing insecure that they have access to. So want to make sure that that is on our radar as we propose how our city is going to take on the initiatives and really making sure that we have services available to those that need it. I, there was a portion of it talking about how we will have our TPD and other employees that are in contact with this population be further trained. And I just want to make sure that neighborhood services, as well as our graffiti abatement, individuals are involved in that, if, if that is something that our, our staff would see fit. I know that they deal a lot with public-facing situations that are, that can be difficult to handle, and they do a great job of it. But additional training never hurts. The portion of the report that talks about the, addressing the panhandling issue in our city, I know, I'm not sure, I'm sure the, with the ad hoc committee is doing the research that they've done. There are some infrastructure opportunities that are essentially like little coin slots at the corners of downtown areas where there's prominent panhandling. Yes, yeah, there's lots of cities that are looking into that, so I know that the, the, the report outlines having our staff look into it, so I'm just suggesting that, that's what I've seen, and I know there's been a lot of success with it, especially in areas that have it. And I also, my support on these initiatives is for it to come back. This is a staff report, or a report from an ad hoc committee outlining general, generalities and really the foundation of what we can rely on at this point as a city. And the specificities and the, how we will logically approach it is going to come back with a fully vetted staff recommendation for us to then identify funding, prioritization, and really how to implement it, which is the style of our government. We decide the policy and the, and the direction, and then staff will come We decide the policy and the, and the direction, and then staff will come back with, with how to accomplish and implement that. And that's what I believe is being accomplished with the ad hoc coming back with a full-scale report on how to do that. Um, I know that the point in time count is going to be occurring. I just really caution, and I, I don't really like complaining about things without providing any alternative, but the point in time count is very minimal. It's, it's only a very short amount of time where people are out there counting people. They're visually, you know, assumed people who are unsheltered. They ask a handful of questions. It's a baseline, if anything. That is not reflective of the entire population that these programs and recommendations would be designed to help. So I just want to reiterate that it's, it's, it's a metric. It's, it's what people use. I'm not an expert. I don't have a, an, an alternative, uh, solution to it. But the point in time count, think of, I suggest and caution people to think of it as, as an absolute minimal number, not the totality, um, because we are learning that, um, unsheltered individuals look a lot different than what a stereotypical, um, individual we would imagine would look like, uh, and those that are on the brick of being housing insecure. So I just want to make a couple of those comments, as well as I totally agree with, um, the assertion that the composition of this committee needs to be, the one that's, how it's written in the report, the one that's going to be a part of the long, longstanding handling of this, these initiatives should be composed of people, experts in the field, as well as members of, uh, that are tasked, what we're tasked with, with overseeing the community staff. Um, but I would love to see that come back and have that be a public policy decision of how that makeup is going to look. That needs to be vetted through the public, and it needs to be something that is going to be longstanding, much longer than any of our individual terms should last. Because this problem is not going to go away, nor the things that were articulated in this, in this report are not going to solve it at all. There, it's going to do a Band-Aid effect, and there's a lot larger, um, institutions that can, can be much more responsible for fixing this issue. Um, but that's not going to happen overnight, nor is it going to happen even if everything was, even if everything was approved and funded. It would help, but it's not going to solve it. And I think that that's something that we know as a, as a local community, that's, it's not, it, it's impossible for us to solve overnight and solve, solve within a term. Um, the, the other, um, suggestion I have, I know that Legacy Health Endowment is, is identified as the foundation that is being, that is funded or that would, that could be funded and that is, uh, able to provide these services. Um, I just think it's fair for us to do our duty, um, and maybe as, uh, Mr. Wilson vets these, uh, initiatives, to identify some that could go out for RFP, if we could be a little more competitive and maybe cut some costs, or, or to see if there's a, a justice quality, but maybe, um, alternative approaches to them. I know, if Legacy, I know that there, you guys, the whole, um, organization is absolutely qualified to and, and take, take over. But I just think from our perspective, if there is an opportunity to see what other ser, what other, um, organizations can fulfill that service, then we should. So I just want to add that for Mr. Wilson as he vets some of these ideas.
Councilmember Strong?
I'll, I'll piggyback off the end. I think wherever there's an opportunity to take a slice of the service and put it out to bid, um, I think that does align with kind of what, what our, uh, policy has been as a council. Uh, I love identifying specific organizations with the community that would be really highly qualified and capable of delivering the service, but for the sake of transparency and, uh, a competitive process, I think whenever there is something that we could put out to bid, I think we should. Um, on the, I want to speak specifically to, uh, Mr. Treewiler's comment. I think, uh, and just any comment where there's concern that we're judging or placing the homeless population as another, um, I, I have to, I have to trust that my colleagues and everyone that's working on this issue does have an incredible degree of compassion and empathy for those that are suffering and, uh, are, are, we're, we're doing this because we want to see things better for people. I know it's, it's a, it's a very politicized issue, and sometimes we get upset about the methods in which we're going to be trying to address it. But I think, um, you know, like, from seeing what I'm seeing here, um, and the fact that this is being prioritized, um, it's, it speaks to the fact that there is a strong degree of compassion. And that's not something I doubt amongst the Turlock public in general. When I first came into the council, I thought some people that had different political views of me, uh, were mean-spirited and didn't have care for the vulnerable population. But it just takes time to talk to them and realize that sometimes it just hurts them to see people suffering. And they, there's just disagreements on how we can get people out of, out of that, that condition. Um, I want to reinforce that I have full agreement that we've got to do what we can to make sure that all of our efforts have the cultural, cultural competency, as well as, um, lived experience within the leadership, the ad hoc, or the, the task force that's going to come out of this. Those are critical for us to be able to have the proper perspective going through. Um, and that really kind of reinforces the desire to be, um, you know, empathetic and compassionate to the, that population, make sure that they're part of the process of shaping the, the solutions that we're going to be coming out of it. Um, and then I, I, one of the things that I think it, the report does speak to the need to look at the right pathway out of, uh, out of, out of an encampment into stabilized living. Uh, I think right now, very much what we've got is a clear gap between shelter and home. We've got, we've got an opening, we've got openings and beds at, at our shelters on a regular basis. It's never, I don't believe has, has reached, uh, it's never been full since I've been in office. Um, but I do believe that there's the alternative shelter model that provides individuals with the autonomy and the privacy and the stability is one of the things that, um, is most capable of getting people off the street on their feet and able to engage in programs that are gonna, um, gonna serve for their betterment. Uh, so I hope that there's a true interest and a full exhaustive, uh, research and identifying what, what pathway we're going to take there. Because just putting myself in the perspective of a homeless, uh, individual, a shelter that kicks me out every morning and doesn't allow me to keep my possessions, and then I'm supposed to somehow, uh, go into program or, uh, maintain a full-time job and then be back at a certain time, it doesn't lend itself to the stability that we're looking for. So those, uh, those alternative shelters, stabilized living conditions are key. And then, uh, to Mr. Bridegroom, the prevention piece, absolutely. Um, I think maybe that's, uh, as a separate, uh, it's, it's spoken to, yeah. Um, yeah, absolutely. We, we've got to be, we got to stop the bleeding. Um, and we've got to look to the next generation, our, and our youth, and really figure out, like, what are the things that we can be doing? And, you know, if, if it's from an investment perspective, I, I would spend eighty percent of our resources on prevention, prevention efforts, um, and twenty percent towards, in the long term. Right now, we've got to deal with the crisis a hand, but over the long term, we've got to shift our resources towards preventative efforts. So this isn't a continuous problem that cities, uh, throughout the state are dealing with. So, uh, again, thank you guys for your work. I really appreciate what you brought forward.
Well, thank you to Councilmember Moniz, who did most of the heavy, heavy lifting. She, uh, she's definitely the brains of this, this little outfit. Um, we will continue to work hard on this. Um, as we stated before, we have a Zoom meeting with the Caltrans District Ten represent, well, manager on the twenty-eighth, um, at four o'clock. So we'll report back, um, on our findings. Uh, the point in time count being done, uh, tomorrow and, and the next day, and that will determine when Caltrans starts their clearing of the encampments along the freeway on ramps, off ramps, um, in, in the orchards behind the freeways. Um, we will definitely be addressing that with the Caltrans, um, executives. So thank you to Councilmember Moniz, and we will continue to keep working on this.
Thank you. Um, but this is not Councilmember Moniz. This has been an undertaking from, from everybody. I mean, folks, you know, um, so I, I drove down to Bakersfield to look at the Built for Zero, because Bakersfield was one of six in the nation that had Built for Zero and homeless. I drove down there, took a look at that program. But what I'm not telling you is that Gary Hampton was on vacation, and I sent him on a wild goose chase through Boise, Idaho to get me some pictures. And the man's on vacation. And I'm like, but I really need this data. So it, it, we really are grateful to everybody that has stepped up and helped out here and there. Um, because I, Vice Mayor and I couldn't have put this together without everybody's help involved, from Caltrans to the county, to the district attorney's office, to the courthouse, to the police department, to everybody involved, you know? Um, and I'm a pastor's kid. A lot of you guys know that about me. When you're a pastor's kid, you learn really early on at a young age, um, how to take care of our homeless folks. And I appreciate what Mr. Treewiler said about us needing to wrap our heads around the fact that these homeless people, they're us. They're part of our community. And they're, we can't just, you know, treat them as, you know, as if they're outsiders, because they are here, and it's what makes our community as diverse as it is, you know? I, I remember when I was working on the Columbia Pool Project, and we were doing the surveys, and people on the north side of town would say, oh, yes, those kids need that pool. Oh, yes, please give those kids that pool. So it was like, those kids on the west side, it's like we have this stigma over here, and we don't, we don't, we don't want that. I don't want stereotypes for my, for my kids or for our unsheltered individuals, because they are a part of the makeup and the fabric of our own community. So, Mr. Treewiler, thank you for those comments. Um, and I think that's, I think I've said enough tonight.
You have talked a lot. No, just kidding. No, I really, I appreciate you guys going, uh, going through all this, meeting with so many people. Mr. Lewis, thank you so much for, uh, I know you've sent us a lot of, uh, information in the last several years, and, and it seems like a lot of that's coming to fruition here. So I appreciate the data that you guys have, uh, provided, and since you've been in, inserted into Turlock so well, you can give us a better understanding of where we're, where we're hitting the marks and where we're not. Um, our last point in time count actually was eighty percent white male adult, uh, homeless, which is, it was frightening. So now we have the next one coming up. And, and that one, as, uh, Councilmember Larson said, it, it won't take into account the people who are not there that day, um, and/or those that are one paycheck away. And there's a lot of those people out there that we just don't know about. And that's hugely important to me. Um, when you spoke to duplication, I totally agree with you. And Opportunity Stanislaus and the county both do a ton of workforce, and I don't want us to just start taking on everybody's efforts. I want these collaborations to occur. Uh, maybe this is where Shaw starts to get stronger and, and we, we build upon that. When we talk about who, who would be on a committee here, as much as I want stakeholders, I don't want anybody who's getting a dollar from us, because that really concerns me that then there's an ultimate, uh, ulterior motive, if you will. Um, then, uh, as far as the counties, their monies that they have, they, they actually lost or losing money, what, two years ago, they, that's when they changed to severe, um, mental health. It's the only thing that they would, they would cover. And so the probation department and, uh, the cares units and everybody, that's all they cover. So we got to wait for somebody to get there, which is not what I think is what we should be doing. That's more preventative in my mind, where, you know, you get out of jail and you're, the cocktail that you've been taking for however long, whatever medications you need, it could be not even mental health. It could be just diabetes epileptic, um, medicines. We need to be able to get that to them immediately so we don't have them get to the extreme and have these problems. And then, uh, I, I just, I'm hoping that we're, we're addressing, for those who want help, and they're, you're right, Cheryl, there's a lot of people who don't want help. It's no different, my father died of alcoholism. You, I, as much as I wanted him not to take a drink, the man couldn't help himself. He loved it more than he loved his, his kids, really, if you, I mean, being honest. You can't make them stop. You got to get them to, uh, where they need to be. And if that means gutter, that's where they'll, they'll be. And then we're here to say, here, how can we help? But in between that, we'll address the foundational, uh, concerns that they have and their needs, whether it's, uh, mental health and/or physical issues that they have or drug addiction. Those are, all those things are available through the county already. They're getting state and federal funding. Let's try and, and diversify what we're doing, find out where the problems are, and then utilize what's already in, in play. That's, you're right, Councilmember Larson, we're not here to do all these things. And then, um, let's, let's have consequences and not enable people. I mean, everybody here knows that when you're held to a standard, you, you appreciate somebody that much better. Every single person here, if you say, who's your favorite teacher, you're going to remember the one that held you to the highest quality standard, not the one that lets you get away with murder. So, having said that, I really appreciate everything you guys have done. I know we, this conversation will go on and on for many, many, many years, uh, but hopefully we'll make a small, uh, change for the positive for our community. Is there a motion?
Uh, before, before I make the motion, I forgot to put out one thing. I know, and this might be to Jeffrey, who is not here, maybe he's listening in cyberspace, but, or Mr. Wilson. I know there's going, there's some respite changes that are coming in, into Medi-Cal legislation this year. So there might be opportunities, just wanted to put it out there, that fun, it's hard to get on it now, but it might be a little bit easier. So just want to put that out there, that we might be able to connect some people. Um, with that, a motion to approve the report.
Okay.
Is that good?
We have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember, or, sorry, Mayor Buback?
Yes. It passes five-zero. For the time being, we will hand it over to you, Mr. Wilson. Let's take a five-minute break real quick, please.
Ms. Larson?
I just happened to get up.
Uh, yeah, exactly.
Sorry. I just figured everybody needed a moment.
We too need a moment.
She wiped her screen.
She's breaking.
Oh, just pulling, pulling a bear.
Any questions?
Um, what have you been doing?
Hey, how, how did you, in the back? I hadn't thought she was all done.
Trying to hold on to her, as much as I can, because I'm sure fat. So once I can get one position, I'm like, no.
No, I have a problem. I love the lady, but.
Yeah, just trying to hold on to get some of this stuff done, especially the audit. We're the auditors in the house right now, so.
When I walked past, I said, what are you doing there? She had her head. I better not interrupt.
Yeah. So she's acting as, uh, principal counter right now. So, and she's not too bad. She's like in the high six-hundred. So she's got a little bit of time. As soon as I came in, she really pulled back. And she only goes two days a week.
She's, she's.
Yeah, she's, yeah, she's doing great. She's a wealthy daughter.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah. I'll hold on to her as long as I can. Eventually just wants tired again, but yeah, she'll get bored. She'll come back.
Yeah. I think, uh, I, I thought Kelly would. She said, oh, I'm done. Kelly would.
Well, she had no choice. She was done, though.
Well, I mean, but I said, you know, would you like her? And she was like, oh, no. I heard Mantika's looking for a, uh, clerk, for the, somebody that's having a baby or something.
Really?
The clerk there, yeah. A friend of mine was like, you doing, one of your guys, I'm considering anybody?
Cassie?
Somebody's on maternity.
I haven't talked to her since I left.
Okay, yeah.
Could be her.
I don't either.
Like, is she just on maternity leave?
Yeah, yeah, they just need for that. Or maybe about to leave. I don't know. I just, it was, like.
Or maybe about to leave, I don't know, I just, it was through like the fifth party. Yeah, not even sure how I found out.
Actually, Jeff Tilton, who does the districting.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the clerk there. She's buried. Her last name is Tilton.
Oh wow.
So, yeah.
Stretching. I know, I figured, give him just a second. I know the nurse wants to get out of here and drive all the way back to, oh, the building. You just tell him you're, you're gonna let him burn that building down?
Not yet.
He could do it right now if he did, okay. Alrighty, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor. No, she's right there talking. Isn't she, isn't she standing next to Ernst? Is that her?
She's, I mean, she's outside your door, Cheryl.
Oh, no, you sure? Who's talking to Ernst? All right, we're gonna start back up if I can get Vice Mayor to stop chitty chatting. Pam Franco. Pam Franco to the Ades, please. All right, thank you Chief Ernst, if you can make Pam get over here. Again, chitty chatty, all right. Look at that, Mr. Moreno, are you ready?
I am, thank you.
Let's go.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. Tonight we'll have mid-year budget for the fiscal year of 2022. So we'll go through the document. What I have is a formal presentation for you. There is an augmentation that goes along with this. For the first part of the presentation, we're really just go through the numbers and the assessment. You did get a full.
You guys can you hang on out there, we'll just be a little more quiet so he can do his explanation here, please. Thank you.
I'm done, no.
All right, and we'll vote yes?
So within your documents that you have, your staff report, you have some detailed information aligned items, going through the general fund and some other funds. So my presentation is more of a summary and overview of what you've seen within that document. Obviously, we tried to go line through line, we'd be here all night. So what you'll see through my presentation is a little more summary in essence of how we come to the information that we're currently at. All right? So within the mid-year budget activity, what you'll look at is more of a budget to actual, when referring to the general fund. The general fund has a lot of activity that comes in where revenue flows and expenditure flows come at different activity points within your budget process. What I like to do is actually capture that information. So the first part we'll look at is basically what, what had transpired as far as the adopted budget and the amended budget, right? So your adopted budget, which was activated or adopted on June 8th of 2021, you had revenue streams, or revenues at 4.9, or 49.3 and adopt expenditures of 47.9. Actually, those numbers are backwards, I apologize that, because your expenditures are actually higher. So that number is in reverse. So you did adopt the budget where expenditures were higher than overall revenues. Same thing for December 31st, again, it looks like I reverted those numbers. Your revenues are actually supposed to be at 50.3 and your, your expenditures at 53.8. So you do have an unbalanced budget going into the process. There is a lot of conversation when it's that and how you came to those numbers and information. Basically, what transpired is you had a new revenue stream coming in, Measure A, and what does that look like, right? Those never, those numbers are still trying to come in, so you really didn't want to hold on to that information until you can come more through the augmentation process or cut early updates so that we can assess that information a little more accurately as it develops, okay? So through the augmentation process or through the budget processing, there is amendments to go on throughout the year. Part of those factors would be MOU bargaining unit increases or sales tax increases, which you're gonna see within the report, just to kind of get the budget updated to where it needs to be so that you can have those revenue streams or expenditures to go through the fiscal year. So through my, my assumption process of a mid-year budget assumption, you'll see a 50% of the amended budget basically as your guide point, right? Your budget for the general fund, you're at 50%, here's your benchmark and what are revenues expenditures look like at that point in time. So through that process, I'll bring in sales tax because up to that point, you've only really had four months come in. So certainly you have two months that are actually being accrued through the end of the fiscal year. I'll pull in those six months, some are assumptions, some I already know because of the point in time which we're actually dealing with in this report, but I'll pull that information to give you more of a snapshot of what we're currently trying to do. Another one of those items is your property tax. Property tax actually is received proportionment, the force proportionment in January. So I like to pull that information in again to give you a true picture of what you're looking at. These are estimates in some standpoints. Same thing with expenditures, if there's large ones that are outstanding, I'll pull that information as best I can, give an estimate so that we can get a true snapshot of what those, that mid-year looks like. Okay? So to go through the information, you'll see at the budget process, so budget for this point of revenues is 25, 25.1 million. Your actuals are at 22 million, giving you a percentage of 44%. So you can see I'm kind of gauging that, what that looks like to the 50% marker. Some of the primary factors within that are your non-department 45. What's built into that is your property tax and your sales tax. As you can see from the prior presentation you had, you have seen your sales track coming stronger than what's originally projected. Okay, so you're seeing a larger that factor at that standpoint. So given that number, you, some of those, those other revenues that still not coming in, franchise fees and things of that nature, so you, you see a 45% marker, but that is still a strong marker overall, just kind of how that overall department develops. So it's a big piece of your overall budget, but obviously not the full extent of the revenue streams that come in. Okay? So your expenditures to budget, you have 26.9 million, your actuals at 21.7, which gives you an actual percentage of 44, again, comparing to the 50% marker. So what you're seeing on both sides is really a balance overall with a, with a small net gain, but you'll see a determinant factor for one of the departments is, is the fire department, we're at 51%. Most departments are actually under that marker of 50%, so you're blended overall, you're coming to a 44% of your actual budget. Okay? So through this analysis, you can see you have an estimated gain of 318,000 to change. At this standpoint, that's a good number, right? I mean, there's a lot of things that transpire. Again, you had MOU increases, you had different things that come into reserve factors that are, that are allocated into the budget process. So given those factors that came in and given the, the original adopted budget, you are ahead of where you originally projected to be. So it's a good sign, right? It's not the best number, but again, given the transactions that has transpired, that's a lot better. You're covering, covering some of those costs that have transpired in budget. Okay? So on this sheet, you're gonna see a lot of what you'll see within the staff report. It's looking at the other funds, right? So there are some major funds that we'd like to talk about. Some of these are the cannabis fund, they come up quite often, right? So you can see the revenues are coming in, but the expenditures not coming out because these are really program based, a lot of these funds. The expenditures go out as a program or the allocation comes through. So it's not a one for one like you would see at a general fund, right? You have your actuals, you utilize those actuals and you go through the budget process or do the amendments so that you can utilize those funds as needed or allocated by council. A good one to, to reference to again is your, your American Rescue Plan, 7.8 million. That is your first tranche again, so we did receive those funds this fiscal year. You can see the actual expenditures very middle, but again, you've done, through a budget augmentations, you have allocated expenditures there, you just haven't spent it yet. It's just an actual basis, okay? So tourism, another big one, you do see revenues coming in. What you do see is a larger number because this one is a program oriented and some of those program funds are being allocated to where it needs to be. Some of the bigger ones that do stick out are gonna be your Fund 210, or, I'm sorry, 410 and 420, those are your utility programs. You do see a negative number, but what's happened is revenues and expenditures don't match. And that, that's common because what happens is you're, you're so heavily into capital projects that you're gonna get a lot of that upfront cost, but your revenues are catching up. Or your allocation is really coming out of the reserve as well because your capital improvement plan matches your cash flows throughout multiple years, not just one independent year. Okay? So I don't foresee an issue within those funds. So that concludes my overall presentation on just those items. So before I go forward and see the augmentation and other items that are being requested, is there any questions?
Questions from Mr. Moreno. All right, let's proceed.
Thank you. Easy peasy.
Good explanation.
You know, another question before we move on, the present, this is just a statement and a question for the all of council. So the information you see is a little similar to what you've seen in the past, but a little different too as well. So I'm kind of morphing my presentation to how council wasn't see that information. I do feel you got a pretty heavy packet, but some people want to see that full data. So if you can provide feedback or maybe a later date, you don't have to do it now, what you thought works for you and how you see the information or what you may want to see more from me, that would help me build my presentation in the, in the coming quarters. Okay? So again, going back into the augmentation, which is the next part of our presentation, at this point in time, we are pulling in a lot of different items that were put in during the budget process for the augmentations. So what we're basically gonna do is similar to what you've done in the past and kind of just go through each item a little bit and discuss it, what it looks like. And then we take a vote on it and we'll move forward each one. So the first one is coming out of General Services. It is for office equipment and furniture for a scanner for $9,000. So again, you can go through the voting process for each one of these items where you can say yes or no. And then at that, that standpoint, you also identify a funding source if you are gonna say yes. Okay? So we can go through the process now and just kind of take a vote.
Let's open it to the public real quick first, just in case there's some questions actually from council first regarding to the process before we go.
Sure. I just have a question on, on the scanner. What was the purpose and?
Sure. So in more depth analysis, what I can do is direct back to the directors that it can give a little bit more information on the more detail of how that's gonna be utilized. So, kick that to you.
Pass the mic.
Sarah?
Sarah, hi. She's like, you guys, I'm hiding.
It's, it's the usage of the scanner that's being requested for the Human Resource Department.
The $9,000? Can you just tell Vice Mayor, she wanted to know what the scanner's for?
Yes, the scanner is for document imaging. We haven't even started that, so we're trying to get all of those documents put in a system so we can.
So it's going, you're taking everything now, putting it into an electronic form?
A lot of departments have done that, we have not started that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions before we open it to the public then for Mr. Moreno or any of our directors? Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, this is for our, our public safety departments. We are talking a little bit about the adjusting overtime or increasing the overtime and please correct me if my, my understanding is, is incorrect. If our, if, if we're close to 50%, only one above 50% in terms of what we've allocated so far, are we just anticipating those additional costs, the 50,000?
I can actually take that.
Okay, thank you.
So we are, so given the budget process, what you look at is you look at how many salaries, or how many positions are actually filled. Since they're so underfilled, I did do a forecast for them and they're gonna be overbudgeted, they don't start pulling in some money. A lot of that is because of overtime. So that I'll give them money to assess the overtime, but as well if they need to shift it to cover some of the other expenditures within the labor category, they can do that a later date. But it's really, I did forecast out through the end of the year, they will be either right on, but they're bringing more positions on, so it's really to cover that cost too as well.
Okay, so, so following up to that, if there were to be a council direction to increase or ask for additional positions, whether it's in the middle of a budget year, I guess it's more theoretical then, if it is in the middle of a budget year, are you, are you gonna have to come back every time and ask for that additional overtime that like a $50,000?
That was kind of the direction that, from my understanding, going into the budget process, they, they did ask for a large chunk.
Right.
And they wanted them to come back in quarters and request additional funds for that, for that lineup.
It's kind of a part of the whole idea that we've, we've, we've gone forward with that this is a living document because of our different financial situation.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But to answer your question, you're correct. You would normally have that during the budget process, but they wanted to come back and have assessment of that. But again, I have forecasted it out.
Okay. If not, any other questions for Mr. Moreno? Let's go ahead and open it to the public. Are there any questions for, or comments you want to make in regard to this? Mr. Puffer, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one question. Where in the agenda is this budget update?
It's 9F as in Frank.
It was the very last item, I was moved up.
We voted to do 9C, then 9A, and then 9F.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Braggrum.
These answers my first presentation.
My reputation proceeds, man. Okay. Yeah, so I, I have a number of general questions. You kind of asked a question of what they would like to see that would help, okay? So I'll, I'll give my, my comments. Okay, you had like a summary for the general fund for the general reserve. Okay. I actually found that a little confusing because it had cannabis and Measure A in there and it seemed like those numbers actually were from June of 2021, whereas at the bottom of the page, it said it was updated February of 2022. So I, I found that confusing.
So, can I?
We'll do that afterwards, thank you, Mr. Moreno.
So, actually, what I would have liked to have seen, it would help me to understand a lot more, is if we had a summary for the general fund, a separate summary for the cannabis fund, a separate summary for Measure A, for Measure L, and for ARPA. So we kind of knew what we were getting and what was going out for each of those different ones. I also couldn't find anywhere in here the status of Measure L funds, how much we have, how much we've dedicated. I guess I'll talk later about franchise fees, maybe. I, I've harped on this before. I don't see any expenses for police time for enforcing the cannabis black market. That was part of the overhead costs that were outlined to the council by the city manager when you adopted the criteria for how cannabis funds would be spent. Okay? And then on page 854 of the agenda package, gets a little complicated here. On page 117 of the attachment A, you list transfers out Measure A road maintenance for the 2122 amended budget is 6.17 million. But on the next page, for Program 800 Roads, the transfer in Measure A road maintenance is listed as only 5.85 million. I see that you included the 939 contract with MBI, but not the 1.55 million dollar contract that was approved two council meetings ago. You list in there 4.2 million dollars in construction projects. Is there a way that we can get a list of what those projects are? And then for Measure A on, again, page 118 of, of that supplement that you added in there, you list an amended budget opening balance at 2.9 million and revenues of 12.34 million for Measure A. But on the next page, you list the revenues as 18.2 million. I don't know how we got 18.2 million of revenue in Measure A. And then in that summary at the end there, the expenses for Measure A for the adopted budget was listed with 14.13 million of expenses. Again, I don't, I don't know where all those 14 million of expenses of Measure A monies came from, so if you could help my ignorance on those things, I, I would appreciate it.
Sure, so we'll kind of start back at the beginning.
Moreno, hang on, we're gonna go ahead and get everybody and then we'll go.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Braggrum. Anyone else wishing to ask, state something? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public and go ahead, Mr. Moreno. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public and go ahead, Mr. Moreno.
Sorry, didn't write them all down, so we'll try and get them as best we can here. So going through, let's start with Measure A because that was the last one you discussed. What you're seeing is a little bit of shifting and moving. Really what I want to do with Measure A, and again, one of your questions was you don't see all of it allocated. This is a snapshot as a mid-year, so you're not going to get some of the things that happened transpired after that. If there was action as far as an amended budget. So this is just again, a snapshot as a mid-year. You do see a lot of shifting and moving within this met, this fund. Really what I'm going to start doing, and you'll see that in a future presentation, I'm going to pull this apart a little bit. So the roads program has its allocation of 50% and 60%, and that's really what you're seeing within the budget shift around. Because that has to be accounted for within the budget process of that policy decision that was made. What I'd like to do is actually tear this fund and split it to create the roads program separate from Measure A. So you're going to see that allocation come as revenues come in, because you can get a true tracking mechanism. Measure A does have a committee that I need to report to, and it's my goal and objective to make these reports clean. And the best way you can do that is create separate funds. So a lot of what you're seeing, and you're kind of Joe Vince that a little bit of, you know, revenue expenditures in one section and kind of commingling and coming to a bottom line. A lot of that gets confusing, right? Because you had departments within funds of subsections. So I'm going to pull that apart to address your question so that you can get a clearer snapshot. So I hope that answers your question about Measure A for the most part. And as far as the numbers, I can definitely sit down with you and talk about where those numbers are all coming from. And so you can see the full detail of what that scope looks like, okay? So again, just make, give me a call, send me an email, I'll be happy to sit down with you, okay?
As far as the black market, so Chief Haddon probably doesn't even know this is happening. So I'm guessing that SIU is tasked with that right now, marijuana is one of their priorities, right? I'm thinking.
Typically what you'll see on a special force or, for example, the cannabis fund, you'll see a direct allocation of labor. Something may have transpired, maybe it has a kind of finance so we can do that direct allocation. So I can't answer to whether the program has happened, but you would see that expenditure come through as a direct allocation to that fund.
So if we could have on a quarterly basis or something, know where that came from, like, you know, okay, that, we're, I'm guessing that Mr. Petralakis is probably doing some research on marijuana issues as well while the state keeps fluctuating with their concerns. So if we can see where we're pulling money out of that specifically, that'd be kind of cool.
Okay.
And I think then he also asked about the summaries for general, the general fund, weed, LA.
Yeah, so we can pull this apart. What did you see within the financial statements that are, the audited financial statements is kind of a commingling of those funds. They're all considered a general fund, that's why you have them allocated in that nature. If it's a little cleaner for a board, it's not a problem for me to pull it apart so you can see it individually, so we can definitely do that, yeah. But that's why they're grouped in that sense, because they're all seen as general funds. Although they have their own restrictions, they all kind of get commingled in the financial statements.
Outstanding. Oh, yes, the list of the 4.2 million.
If it was a budget item, it just, we can go back to the budget process and see what was attempted to be allocated there.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, usually it's some kind of funding mechanism for offsetting federal grants as a match or something to that extent. But yeah, we can definitely go back to that capital improvement plan during the budget process and look at that information.
And then are you monitoring Measure L then, or is it just compiled and thrown to the poor Katie? How's that work because it's county?
So Measure L is actually identified and managed by multiple departments. Because of the capital projects that go into it, transit goes into it, engineering goes into it, finance has a piece as far as reporting and potential things like that. So it's a little bit indifferent people getting the information together to make sure we report appropriately as one item, but also expanding appropriately. So it's a little bit of different, everybody getting into that fund.
Okay, so we've closed the public comment, we're back here. And are there any questions before we go on by line? No, all right, so any comments from you, Mr. Wilson? All right, so if we can have you kind of just call out, we'll start with office equipment and furniture. There's no Y, that means we're not even considering ARPA, so then it's either yes or no. And then where you'd want to do it, Measure A or general fund reserve? Go ahead and start the one first, please.
The line one is office equipment and furniture. Is that Ms. Larson? Yeah, sorry, I was, Councilmember Larson?
Yes, general fund.
Okay, and then, all right. Got to get my group going.
All right.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund reserve.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, general fund reserve.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, general fund reserve.
And Mayor Bublak?
Yes, so five guesses with general fund reserve, so we'll pass with that allocation. Number two, succession planning and leadership academy. It could be ARPA and yes, no, general fund, Measure A or ARPA?
All right, Councilmember Larson?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, general fund reserve.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, general fund reserve.
Mayor Bublak?
Wow, this is getting easy, yes, general fund, reserve. All right, third item, transferring out to Fund 502 Engineering from Fund 110 Fee Subsidy. Augment engineering for fee subsidy from the general fund. It cannot be ARPA, so call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, general fund.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, and it passes through the general fund reserve. Item four, police services, full-time salaries unfreezed, two community service officers, positions frozen since 2021. It can be ARPA, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, Measure A.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, Measure A, passes with five, this is getting too nice. I know. Overtime standard, historically under budgeted, it cannot be ARPA, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, general fund reserve.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, Measure A.
And Mayor Bublak?
Yes, Measure A, it will be allocated from Measure A. Item six, overtime community assistance response engagement, increased response to issues related to the program. It cannot be ARPA, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, general fund reserve.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, Measure A.
And Mayor Bublak?
Yes, Measure A, it will be allocated through Measure A. Overtime collateral duty training tracked separately from regular patrol time cannot be ARPA.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, general fund reserve.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund reserve.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, Measure A.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, Measure A, it will pass through Measure A. Transfers out to vehicle replacement amount required each year to sustain equipment replacement cannot be ARPA.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, general fund.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, general fund, it will be allocated through general fund. Transfers out to Fund 240 for police equipment amount required each year to sustain equipment replacement cannot be ARPA.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, general fund.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, general fund, it will be allocated through the general fund. Fire services, overtime standard needed to staff all four fire stations cannot be ARPA.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, Measure A.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, Measure A, it will be allocated through Measure A. Revenue, transfer from Fund 110 to Fund 502 Engineering subsidy cannot be ARPA, call the roll.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes. I don't think there's.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yes.
It can only be yes or no.
All right, Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, passes five zero. Number 13, through expenditures, full-time salaries unfreezed, traffic technician, address traffic complaints, infrastructure responding inquiries on traffic-related concerns. This position will minimize risk associated with the transportation network and will generate a small portion, it, ARPA could be. So it is potential for ARPA, go ahead.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, general fund.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, general fund, it will be going through that. Full-time salaries reclassified staff services assistant to staff services technician, engineering allocations, it can be ARPA.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, general fund.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, general fund. Full-time salary, staff services analyst, it's a new salary and benefits, and it cannot be ARPA.
It cannot, or it can?
Cannot.
Okay, Councilmember Larson?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Well, it could be Measure A.
Just so the public understands the difference, really it's about unfreeze positions and what's transpired to the new positions, it's really not the same thing. ARPA is meant to unfreeze prior positions, that's why you see that number there.
Got it.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, general fund.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, general fund, it passes five zero. Full-time salaries for land surveyor, and it can be ARPA.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, general fund.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, general fund. Item 17 is unfreezing engineering tech, and that can be ARPA.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, general fund.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, general fund, it passes five zero through that, and we are finished? No, I'm sorry, I got all excited. All right, this is the revenue, the sales tax current will be, yes or no?
So just give a summary of what the difference between the items that you just talked about and voted on, and then what you're going to look at now. These are actually new requests outside of the budget augmentation process, it really was originally done. So these are new items, just so you understand, okay?
So with the sales tax, you are asking us to?
I'm basically just updating my budget number to reflect more actual.
We don't want the money?
You'll still get the money regardless. Your number will look, of higher number will look higher for me, so instead of being even, it'll be a little more higher.
All right, for number one and number two, I think we can take them together, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's just a yes or a no, yes.
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, five zero, moving on, city manager expense, reclassifying an office assistant and clerk trainee, and it cannot be ARPA.
So this one, you really have no fiscal impact for this coming year because there is salary savings. So I did assess the departments that at least, that's why you're not seeing a fiscal number here. You're really just doing through the process of approving that number, that reclassification. I do, because you'll allow me to reclassify that position so that I can have it.
Number three and number seven, reclassifying the HR, let's put those two together and vote yes or no, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, five zero, fire services, augmenting due to retirement of fire marshal, cannot be ARPA. And that is, we'll take that separate, go ahead.
Councilmember Larson?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Is it yes?
Yes, general fund or Measure A?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're on number eight, correct?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, general fund.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, Measure A.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, Measure A.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, Measure A, it's coming out through Measure A. Parks, the equipment rental?
I had a question about this, could we speak to what the, what are the equipment rentals we're talking about?
Sure, I can speak to it a little bit and then hand it over to the director if we have any further follow-up. So what you're seeing is vandalism in one of the parks where she'd like to actually bring in some equipment, some video equipment to assist with that vandalism. So that's what this request is at this point in time.
Renting it from like another jurisdiction or a company?
A vendor company.
Just a vendor?
Correct.
Do we know?
I'm happy to elaborate on that. So the camera monitoring units that we utilize during the encampment cleanups. We have one currently out at Washington Road due to some thefts that we are experiencing out there. Due to the fact, and council's well aware, we've been putting it in our weekly updates. We've been hit at Donnelly Park for five weeks in a row with significant graffiti and damage to the restroom facility near the skate park. In fact, the chief and I just met out there today. We actually have one of these units out there to try and curb that activity. However, you know, I think it's, we've just recognized as staff that those units can be very beneficial as a supplement, you know, to our law enforcement personnel. Who can't always be everywhere, and so they're just very useful. So I'm recommending that we add this funding to the budget to get us through the end of the year. Hopefully, we won't need it, but I'm, like I said, for five weeks straight, we've been hit at Donnelly Park and it's causing significant time for staff to pull away from their regular duties. And we just feel like we need an additional tool in our back pocket, so to speak, to be able to deal with these types of impacts. So I hope that provides some clarification.
It does, and I would love if you could respond to the idea, when we're talking about equipment rental for parks maintenance, my mind goes to, okay, well, if we're renting equipment, would it be better if we just owned the equipment itself? So is there, is there any cost, I mean, I know you're requiring, you're asking to rent it, so I would like, what's?
We put it into that category because that's really where you would, would be an appropriate place to pay for that kind of a rental, if you will. It's not like maintenance equipment that we're renting or something, it's this specialized security monitoring equipment that's also monitored by the company. So it's a little unique, and we're, again, we're trying to use it as a supplement to what our law enforcement can do for us as a way to sort of mitigate that.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, would you like me to?
Just real quick, I'm sorry, hang on, Councilwoman?
No, I just had a question because this does involve law enforcement, Chief Haddon, if I could just put you on the spot, are you supporting this request for the $20,000 in rental equipment to supplement our officers? Thank you.
Yes.
Again, so we're spending money on renting. I imagine that some cities that, there are cities that invest in security cameras at their park facilities. Long-term potential investment opportunity or need there. Maybe, is that something that we should be exploring?
Actually, the chief and I, when we met today, we discussed that, and part of it was to get his take on how he feels about that approach. And I think we're sort of looking at this as a pilot approach to these issues. And so obviously, we would work, you know, we would partner with our police chief to figure out some long-term strategies. Particularly for areas where we know we have a high incidence of this type of activity taking place, chief?
No, no.
We did talk about that today, and I fully support this. It gives us a good picture of what's going on. So the company that's monitoring this can call into dispatch and report problems, and we're seeing it in real time. It's also just a good deterrent. So as, as somebody's in the park or something, they can get on the loudspeaker and tell them, you're being monitored, something to that effect. So I think it's a really good program.
Mr. Wilson, did you have anything else to add to this, sir?
I was just going to say.
Push your button.
Sorry. I'm just going to say the monitoring aspect, if we were to do our own equipment and stuff, then we'd have to have monitoring done by somebody. Whether that be in the police department or in dispatch, it would be a decision we'd have to make at that time.
Well, just a side note, I'm sorry, we're going off task just a little bit, but I know that Councilman Moniz and I talked about it at Westside Ministries, and then I spoke with you, Mr. Wilson, about the whole maybe pilot program in respect of Columbia Park. You know, we could grow it to Donnelly as well, where we take the idea of the light standards and putting cameras on that and see what that plays out into. Just a little bit different than this, but that's a little bit longer down the road, and we've got to take care of this immediately, so just food for thought. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, general fund.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes, general fund.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, general fund, thank you. On to page 11, we have number 10 and number 11, ARPA and salary changes from departments, we'll go just yes or no for those included.
Can I ask what this is for, there wasn't really an explanation.
Yeah, these funds are actually just setting up the budget process. They never formally adopted utilizing any funds, so they have to come back and see, because they have the funds already, it's just not with the city. They have to draw those funds down, so it's really, there's some work that's going to be going into this program right now, or some staff time and things of that nature. So they really want to be able to account for the. So they really want to be able to account for the revenue that's gonna come in and the budget that's gonna be coming in for expenditures. So it's really more of a process for us to be able to get that augmentation in there.
Call the roll for number ten and eleven, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Boublak?
Yes, they both pass. And then the next is the water quality, reinstate the position of Regulatory Affairs Division, it can be ARPA.
Councilmember Larson?
I'm sorry, I had a question. This, we're reinstating it, or is it being unfrozen? I know it says reinstate, so I answered the question.
They have had it at a prior year point, correct?
Right, okay, so is reinstate, from your perspective or budget reasons, is reinstate different than unfreezing?
Not necessarily, it just depends on when they actually did it. It's still basically the same statement, when you've had it before, reinstate it or bring it back or unfreeze it, which is how I generalize it at this standpoint.
But it was, was it discontinued due to budget constraints?
I'm not sure when they actually had this position, so I can't tell you at what point it got dismissed, or maybe someone retired, I can't give the full scope of that.
No, this, the position, it never really went away, so much as we had a retirement in one of our divisions, and the Regulatory Affairs Manager at that time absorbed those functions as the utilities manager, and then he became the utilities manager, and then Regulatory Affairs wasn't frozen, it just wasn't rebudgeted for in a few...
Just didn't get funded.
In about five years.
Thank you. Okay, I'm ready.
Poor thing.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, General Fund. Wait, yes, yeah. I don't think it asked, oh, yeah, it did.
Actually, I'm sorry, that's gonna be funded by that actual fund itself, so.
Enterprise, yeah.
Yeah, the enterprise fund will be funding it, because, so just yes, that's correct.
Well, actually, let's go ahead, and that, so it shouldn't be ARPA associated, let's do thirteen and fourteen together then, is it yes or no?
Are we still on twelve?
You didn't do twelve.
Oh.
That's what?
Twelve and thirteen go together, so they're getting split between two different funds.
Let's do twelve together, twelve separate, and then thirteen, fourteen together. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Councilmember Larson?
Yes, not ARPA.
Twelve and thirteen go together. Twelve and thirteen go together.
Yes.
Yes, and not ARPA.
Okay, yes, and General Fund or measure A?
I think it's either.
It'd actually be out of the reserve of that fund.
It's general, it's enterprise, it's enterprise.
It's enterprise, so it's gonna be funded directly out of there.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yep.
That's safe, that's safe.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes, the enterprise fund.
Councilmember Moniz?
Uh-huh.
And Mayor Boublak?
Okay, yes, and, sure, let's do that.
Right on.
Okay, and the last one is number fourteen, and it is not ARPA.
Thirteen and fourteen, ma'am.
No.
We just did twelve.
We did twelve and thirteen.
We did twelve and thirteen, we did twelve and thirteen, because it was the same position, two different funds, so.
Last one, here we go.
We're almost there, hanging.
Yes or no?
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Boublak?
Yes, passed, thank you, Mr. Moreno.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
I think you're the bomb.
Going back to our regularly scheduled meeting, we will do motion waiving, reading of all ordinances on the agenda except by title.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Boublak?
Yes, okay. Consent calendar, six I and six M, Ida and M Mary have green sheets associated with them, so if there's any other, if there's anything to remove, please announce.
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
Okay, motion.
Second with the green sheets.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Boublak?
Yes, thank you. Five zero. Final readings, we have a request except for the results of Proposition 218, and we'll have a motion and an ordinance that will need to be read out loud, before we do the roll call, please.
All right. In the matter of amending Turlock Municipal Code Title Six, Chapter Three, Article One, Section Zero One, titled Garbage, Rubbish and Organic Refuse to Implement Updated Fees, Charges for Property Related to Solid Waste Services.
Call the roll?
Do we have a, do we need a motion and all that? No?
Yeah, we do.
It's just, okay.
Well, it's final reading, but go ahead and let's get a motion for the motion and the ordinance, please.
So moved.
Second.
Now, call the roll, please.
Okay, Councilmember Larson?
No.
Councilmember Nazrati?
No.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Boublak?
Yes, it passes three two. Thank you, scavenger people.
Turlock scavenger and the Marchant family, thank you very much.
I'm sorry you waited so long. Public hearings, we're still gonna work on, Mr. Wilson, we're still working on our...
Before the hike goes in effect, right?
April first.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, there are no public hearings. We've done action item A, B was removed, C, we did, and now we're on to D, which is the Pedretti Lights, no, final reading, you don't, no. Oh, no, 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 because it's just being pulled, yeah. Now, I know all your paper fell on the floors, now in not wrong order, huh?
Yeah, I fell asleep.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's past my bedtime.
Yeah.
I'm getting old. Just kidding, but I am getting old. Good evening, mayor, council, city manager. I'm here tonight to talk about the Pedretti Park Light, excuse me, the Pedretti Park Lighting Project. Pedretti Park is our main sports facility for softball. Pedretti Park is our only sports facility that has lights. The lights were put in in nineteen eighty-one, and they have not been updated since nineteen eighty-one. So forty years ago, the lights were put in, and we're still operating with the same materials and everything with the lights. So with that being said, we've had to replace bulbs, we've had to replace ballast, a little bit of, or some wiring here and there, excuse me, but we're in the process of looking into updating to the LED lights. So here's a picture of Pedretti Park, and you can, I mean, it is a picture, but you can see the glare that comes off. This is the HID, the HID metal halide lights. So the HID metal halide lights, they were the premier light back in nineteen eighty-one. So that's what we've had since nineteen eighty-one. This is a picture of a ball field, not Pedretti Park, but this is a picture of a ball field on the left that had the metal halide lights, and then on the right, you'll see the new LED lights that we're proposing. So again, this isn't Pedretti Park, because we haven't updated any lights, but this is a ball field that we, that we are using as an example to show the difference between the two lighting projects. So what, basically what we would be going from to. There are many benefits for upgrading. As you can see, the foot candles, foot candles are what are used to illuminate the ball field, which makes it safer to play. It illuminates everything, less light spillage. The current HID lights are more difficult to find, they're more difficult to, and more expensive to replace. The LED lights will reduce costs by approximately fifty percent to start, it could be more. We anticipate that it might be more, because, again, the lights were put in in nineteen eighty-one. So with that, there could be a higher cost savings for using the lights than the fifty percent. With the new lighting, we also get a ten-year warranty. The ten-year warranty covers everything from replacement of bulbs, the ballast, to any, any materials and labor that our staff wouldn't have to do. We wouldn't be calling out our electrical department, we wouldn't be having our department rent booms and to replace bulbs and all that. Here's a list of the projected savings over ten years, the ten-year warranty. We spend about thirty-two hundred dollars a year on renting booms, which lifts us up to replace the lights. Thirty-five hundred in light replacement, bulbs, ballast. Energy savings over the ten years is estimated at about a hundred and thirty and some change. And then staff time, which staff time just is time that they would be pulled away from doing other jobs. It's not that we would be getting that money back, it's when they're pulled away from their everyday jobs. Here's a graph of what we paid for usage in twenty nineteen. Obviously, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, it was difficult to get those numbers because of COVID, but this was our last full year, so these numbers reflect what we did for the entire year. The whole, the total light project is estimated at about a hundred and fifty thousand, or eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, excuse me. We have some funding sources, there's four hundred and eighty-nine thousand that was set aside from the TOTs. That, we did get awarded a grant from Turlock Irrigation District of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is part of what we are trying to accept tonight, and then with a funding difference of about two hundred thousand dollars. So with that being said, we are, you know, we're looking for direction on whether or not we want to move forward with the lighting project to upgrade to the LEDs. We're looking for acceptance, if council directs us, to accept the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. With the hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, if we change the scope of the work, obviously, that amount would change too, which we'd have to work with TID to determine what, what that would be. I think that's about it.
Okay. Questions? Yeah, question. Okay, so going back to your slide that you took down. The cost savings.
This one?
There you go, there you go. Okay, ten years, cost savings, two hundred and twenty thousand, and the balance is approximately two hundred and ten, so we'd be saving money over the ten-year period by installing the new lights.
At the fifty percent, that's what we'd be looking at. At fifty percent, the cost savings, we were projecting two hundred and twenty thousand and some change. So yes, that's, it would pay for itself because of the warranty and all the upgrades. If that number could, that savings could be higher if it's more than fifty percent that we're saving on the energy.
And then we could advertise our fields have improved lighting and possibly get more tournaments?
Absolutely. One of the things, because of the TID grant, we would have to be advertising for TID at the facilities. We will be able to market our facilities a lot different. We do have some high-profile tournaments, like the CSUS tournament, that comes in every year. That'll be great for them, because as collegiate teams, the newer lights would, helps with play, and it'll, it would be more beneficial for the teams, you know, when they're there, because they know that they're being safe out. Their players are safe and protected out there because of the better lighting.
It's not gonna extend the hours of the Pedretti Park, though.
What do you mean, extend the hours?
The lighting, can you, you know, we have better lighting, we'll go longer with more games playing late into the night, or no?
No, we still, we don't go, we, we won't go past, we try not to go past eleven o'clock, just because of neighbors. Traditionally, in the past, too, there was a lot of lights, or what we currently have, there's a lot of light spillage where the lights spill out onto the freeway, so we try not to play past eleven o'clock just for the neighbors that are in that immediate area, and there's not a lot, but it was always, but now with no orchards, it's a lot, it's a lot brighter with, because of the spillage, so those few houses do get, they do get a lot of lights when we are using those fields. So it's not that we're looking to extend how much longer we're playing, it's to improve the site while on the field for play.
Other questions for Mr. Quinelli?
Yeah, so the total energy cost slide that you had on there, could you go to that? So that's with our current lighting system, yeah?
The actual charges, yes, on...
Twenty-six thousand, so what do we project our annual energy costs to be? It was a hundred and thirty over ten years?
Over ten years, yes.
So we're looking at half the energy costs there?
Yes.
About thirteen thousand a year?
Yeah, thirteen, thirteen and some change. It is, and that's estimated, obviously, annually, because we're trying to project over the ten years.
The question I ask whenever we're looking at modernization with LED lights is, why don't we go the extra step of getting solar energy so that we don't even have that thirteen thousand dollar bill that we're responsible for? Is that something, maybe TID won't give us a grant if we're not using their energy?
Well, the grant, actually, the grant that we looked at with TID was for higher efficiency, and, and, and so that's, that was offered to us. Allison, I don't know if you have any more input on that, I mean, because I don't know if solar was part of that.
Solar hasn't been something that we've looked at, particularly for that facility. What I can speak to is, you know, we've had some areas of parks that we've utilized some solar lighting for, and while it's not as robust as what you would imagine, you know, with a solar farm or something like that, I think really the key is gonna come down to field safety and whether or not that solar lighting can produce an adequate, you know, I see you shaking your head, no, vice mayor. That would be, that would be the only concern. I think there's a lot of other uses that we could look to solar for, but safety lighting, I just don't think we're quite there with the technology, so no, that was not something that we explored.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Let's, no, you do have questions.
I just do have a question. Can you go back to your last slide, please, because I just need to make sure I'm clear on what this is actually gonna cost Turlock?
This one?
I realize, yeah, I realize you're asking us to accept the grant from TID, that's great, but what's our actual cost gonna be? I know you're asking for twenty-five thousand tonight, but what's the city's out-of-pocket cost gonna be?
Okay, so twenty-five thousand tonight is for the consultant to start the bid process. So the total project is, working with engineering, is gonna be estimated at about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's four hundred and eighty-nine thousand that are set aside in the TOT, the assigned TOTs. So basically, once we get the bid, we're anticipating that it could be about another two hundred thousand that would be needed to complete the project. Tonight, what we're asking is to, you know, to give us direction to move forward with, moving forward with the lighting project, accepting the twenty, or to approve the twenty-five thousand to go out to bid with the consultant, and then, and then at that point, once we get the bid information back, then we'll come back with the, I'm pretty sure that will come back as a, the capital improve, or not the capital improvement, but the, the, the engineering project of what the totals will be at that point. But it's, we're projecting that it'll be at two hundred thousand with what we've seen from what Musco, we use Musco to kind of give us a guideline of what it would cost to replace those lights, so we're using that as the baseline. And so that's, that difference is about two hundred thousand. So at that point, when we come back, that's where we'd be trying to see what the difference is.
Ms. Quintero?
We're, right now, the estimated project cost and total cost is based on the engineer's estimate, so essentially, the total cost of Turlock minus the TID grant, we're estimating about seven hundred thousand dollars would be the total city of Turlock cost. A portion of that has already been allocated in TOT, but there is a difference in funding, but once we, if council does move forward tonight, we get the bid documents ready, go out to bid, then we would come back with the actual known costs that we received from... out to bid, then we would come back with the actual known costs that we received from the bids. But this is based on the estimates that we've got from the light manufacturer that we've been working with.
Ms. Katie, thank you so much for clarifying that. I asked the question because we've had a lot of requests lately from the public wanting lights to light up the skate park. And I, and I just, this, this cost is huge, and we're just talking about improving existing lights, and we're looking at $700,000.
Correct. This is, yeah, this is not new poles or new wiring or any of, you know, that this is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak regarding these two motions and resolution for the lighting for Padretti? Mr. Puffer?
So our engineers looked over the park. Are they absolutely certain that they're not going to need to reposition poles and that the wiring is going to not need upgrading? That's my first question. I guess my second one is, just so we have an exact amount and there's no change orders, hopefully, but this is 10 years too late. This should have been done 10 years ago, and Padretti Park, I just haven't got feeling probably makes the city money. And there's very few things the city does that actually makes them money, and we need to make sure that that field is competitive with anything up and down the valley to try and get as many tournaments, to fill the hotels, and everything else that we can. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sure.
Okay, somewhere I'm not tracking, because the comment was made that this is a profit to the city, but I'm thinking, you're going to spend $850,000 to save $220,000 over 10 years. So all I can figure is you're only looking at the $200,000 difference, so is that what's happening? Because the, almost $500,000 is still taxpayer dollars, right? And then, have we looked, my next question is, have we, because this is all you're going to save for 10 years, have we looked at the cost to replace these? Like, in 10 years, how much money are we going to have to spend when they go bad? We happen, the place I work happens to have these, and man, they're designed well. They have like this warranty, and within two months after the warranty, they were just blinking out, you know? We had like one go out before the warranty, and all the rest went out very quickly right after. So the designers did their work and are very expensive to replace. It isn't just like replacing a light bulb, right? And so our experience was, they're very expensive to replace. And the last comment that I would like to either ask or talk, have somebody talk about is, my understanding with the LED, when they start to go out, they become like a strobe light and they flicker, and that can be worse than a light that's out. Of course, I've only seen this when it's one or two lights on a house. It's, you almost can't even see because you've got this strobe light thing going on, letting you know that it's about ready to go out. So what would that do for the players out there if in the middle of a game, strobe lights, they started having strobe lights going on? So those are my comments and questions.
Anyone else? All right, let's close the public comment, and do you have some answers for some of those questions?
Yeah, to go back to Mr. Puffer's question on the light pole position, that was one of the things that was initially discussed, and that would be part of the bid process from when it goes out. If, if the consultant feels that those, those standards don't meet the specs or anything like that, but the initial, the initial consult was that the pole position, they were fine and that they, and we're hoping that everything comes back, that they, they're rated to hold because the LEDs in the new ballast would be lighter than the metal halide that is currently on there. So that shouldn't, should not be the issue, and that's what we're hoping for, that we get back from, from the consultant. The cost to replace the lights in 10 years, we don't know what that cost would be as far as, as, I mean, dollar amount, you know, for the bulb, the strobe, or the LEDs, but after 10 years, it would go back to what we're currently doing. Staff would have to replace, and we'd be using staff time to, to order and replace the bulbs and all that stuff from that point. We, we, the city does not own a boom that can, that can get us up to the top of the lights to replace lights, so we would continue to have to rent a boom. So 10 years down the road, that's, so we would go back to what our current, our current fees are, expenses are.
So, sorry, but can you tell me what it costs if, I understand you can't project out 10 years, but if you were replacing them today, say they've been at their 10 years, what would be the cost for the materials and the labor and everything?
Well, currently, we spend about $3,500 every year on replacement of light bulbs and about $3,200 to rent the boom, just so, every year. When lights go out, we have to rent the boom, and so the cost of the bulbs, we're spending about $3,500, and the cost to rent the boom, it's about $3,200, so every year. So that's, that's where we kind of projected in here over 10 years. It was just, it was just multiplied by 3,200 times the 10 years, 3,500 times the 10 years because that's what we're currently spending.
She's looking specifically for the cost to maintain and replace the new lighting system. Do we have that figured?
I don't have, I don't, I don't have that.
You know what I mean, like, exactly that. If the cost of the actual part is going to run $300,000, we're better off with the hard way. That's what I...
So if, if tonight we're saying, proceed with an engineering and take the money from TID, we're not authorizing the lights?
Correct. So what we're, what we're looking for is to move forward with the, to authorize the $25,000 so we can use the consultant to go out to bid to see what, what the actual cost would be. And then it would be approving the TID grant, and then depending on what we come back with, if, if we have to, if council chooses to change the scope of the project to maybe we're not lighting as many fields or, or something, then at that point, that amount from TID that we'd be getting in the grant would change, and we'd have to update what, what that, what that number would be.
Mayor and Council, if I could jump in here, thank you very much, Mark. Just to give some context to this project, this is, this has been a long-term plan of prior councils that, when staff brought this issue before them, it was added to our capital improvement plan, and it's been in that plan for several years. Unfortunately, due to financial constraints, we weren't able to move forward with the project. And as most people know, the longer you delay, the more expensive it gets. And so, you know, given, given our financial situation prior, you know, to our new revenue streams, it was really uncertain as to when we would be able to actually implement this. But what we do know is that the age of the lights are absolutely affecting the quality of play at our facility, unfortunately. We are seeing more and more failures during games and tournaments, and unfortunately, we are not the only game in town, so to speak. We compete up and down the state with other facilities. And, you know, as much as, you know, Padretti has served us well over the years, it, it's unfortunate that we find ourselves, you know, at this moment where we're needing to make some decisions about whether or not we want to reinvest in the facility. We, we, we do know that this facility is a primary source of our TOT tax. When people come to our community, they stay in a hotel for a multi-day tournament, and that's where we see that revenue generated. We, as, as Mr. Corvelli mentioned, we are a draw for some of these larger tournaments, CSUS, and they have high expectations, as they should, of the facilities that they're choosing to bring these tournaments to. And so I wanted to just sort of give a little bit of that perspective as well, that this really is an investment in this facility that's served this community really well for many, many years. Our staff has done a great job of extending the life, so to speak, of this lighting system, but I just think that we're at a point where, frankly, we're kind of running out of tricks. And so we were hopeful that we could maybe bring this project back to council for consideration. And, you know, I could have put it on the budget conversation and just had a line number there, but obviously, we really wanted to make sure council had all the details and understood the work that's gone into this, you know, not only by prior councils, but also with the efforts by staff to go and seek additional funding through the TID grant. It's a great partnership. We're excited to be able to, hopefully, be able to make this improvement to the facility. And I think that it's much more than just the $200,000 or so thousand dollars a year that we're going to, or excuse me, that we're going to save over the 10 years. It's, it's really a recommitment to that facility and what we hope that it'll do for the community. So happy to answer any additional questions.
No, I just have one more question. Ms. Van Gilder, is Prop 68 still open on parks? Was it extended?
Unfortunately, no. We saw the, the final round, and as you know, we were not, we were not funded. Are you going to, are you going to ask the question about this facility and whether or not that would be an eligible expense?
Yeah, but it's a moot point if Prop 68's no longer open.
Well, and it's also not an eligible census area. That would have been a challenge as well.
Okay, comments?
Thanks so much, Allison, for addressing everything, and, and also, Mark, for the really thorough presentation. Congrat, thanks so much for making sure TID was involved in this project. I think it's absolutely suitable, and I think, thank you to TID for seeing this as a fundable and rightful project. And I appreciate the comments, well, I appreciate the participation more than I can express in terms of really being financially aware and responsible. I think that that is the, one of the best lenses that we look at these, these projects with, as well as having citizens that care enough to come and, and ask these questions. But from a policy, a person who has to oversee that policy decision, sometimes, government's job is not to make money, government's job is to provide a service. And I think that's what I have to look at this project in terms of. Financially, I can't, I can't, I can't task this to, to be utilizing, if it, if it could, great, but utilizing only free Monday, free money when I have experience and know this facility is in such a huge need for these improvements, for these improvements, for the quality of service that, that the citizen, anybody can, can have, as well as the partnerships that it utilizes with our university. And this is one of those aspects where government, this is, this is how much it costs to make sure we have a facility that we can be really proud of, and we know these are the needs, and it's clear from anybody who enters it. So I appreciate it, and I think there's a combination of the lens of being extremely financial, financially responsible, and all, in a combination with making sure we provide a needed service. But with, with something like this, it's, this service would, would be absolutely missed if it wasn't funded immediately and adequately to reach the quality of service that our department is, is, is passionate providing. And I agree with that, and I, and I back it especially for this facility. It's, it's an absolute jewel, and there, we have so much potential there. I wish we could reinvest in more of it for these facilities that we have in our city.
Comments?
The, the one thing I would like to come back is the, the maintenance costs associated with upkeep. I imagine it's going to be much more affordable maintenance than old-dated technology, but it'd be good, I mean, that's critical information for us to have moving forward on the higher, higher level of policy. Yeah, I want, I want us to invest in our parks. I think the park, state of the, state of the art, the best park facilities, not just in the Central Valley, but in, not just the state, in the whole world. Let's do it. Let's get a Jumbo, Jumbotron at Padretti, and let's get the Yankees and Dodgers to play there one week.
Giants and Dodgers.
Yankees.
We probably won't be able to get these bulbs, the old bulbs, much longer, I'm guessing because everything's going LED. So pretty soon, it's not going to even be an option for us to even stick with what we have. And I don't know if anybody else besides me looked at the transportation tax on our budget and noticed that it was down $245,000 from projections. You know, I know that COVID had a big part of that, but we also need to do what we can do to bring back our transportation tax. The TOT tax is, is huge for us, and this facility gets people into our hotels. It gets people into our restaurants. They need, they need to go to Billson's to get, you know, sporting goods. They need to go to Big Five to go grab some, you know, new socks because they got a hole in their socks. We need to do what we need to do to get our transportation tax back up. And also, as far as the budget for, for the bulbs, let's, let's do what we did before with our $489,000 that we put away before and put into our capital facilities a line item to replace bulbs. That way, we never have to worry about this again. So that's my comment.
Motion. Motion to approve both motions and the resolution. Madam Clerk?
We have a motion for the motion, motion and resolution, and we have a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Bubba?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Corvelli. Last but not least, Chief Ernst, you're passing it off.
Oh, he's got a hand on it.
It says "Bado" on here, I don't know.
I'd like, I'd like to comment, Mayor, that we have both Chief Ernst here tonight. Okay, and then we have Assistant Chief Wifey, who's going to do most of the work.
Ouch. All right. Here's the worker.
All right.
Spectator over there, worker here. Got it.
That's right. Well, good evening, Council. My name's Kevin Wise. I'm your new Assistant Chief, and I can't say, tell you how excited we are, myself and Chief Ernst, the Modesto Fire Department, to be, to this new partnership with Turlock City. And I look forward to meeting each of you and getting to know you better and with, along with the rest of the department and the city. Before you tonight is a request to replace two of our Type 1 engines that are, quite frankly, way past their life expectancy. At the October 18th City Council meeting, Chief Harkson gave a presentation on the current status of our fire apparatus. Four of our six current apparatus are past their 15-year life expectancy. So the two that we're wanting to replace this evening are two of our '06 Pierce fire engines. After the October 18th meeting, there was a committee formed with the Apparatus Committee and management to best look how we can replace these apparatus and to come up with a replacement schedule. We worked with a local, local dealer, Rosenbauer, who we purchased two engines from them in 2017, and we also looked at the Pierce manufacturer. The recommendation from the committee was to go with the Pierce, and that's what's been presented to you this evening. The life expectancy of our Type 1, we call them pumppers, so they're, they're our workforce at the Fire Department. They're our first-out apparatus, and that's what we use on the majority of our calls. So the recommendation was the Pierce velocity, and the, the committee felt that that would be the best choice, and there were several reasons why. The new apparatus will provide operational reliability. It'll include, it'll, by purchasing the, the new apparatus, it will increase the reserve capacity by adding the two apparatus to the reserve fleet. Currently, we only have technically one that we're using, and it's a 1999 model. So it's about 16, 17 years old, so it was used for that long, 16 years as first out, and it's been five years used as a reserve, so it's way past its life expectancy. And we only have one for a fleet of, we have four stations, we should at least have two that are ready. By purchasing the two engines right now, we can start a new replacement cycle, a five-year cycle. So with the six engines in that cycle, we'll keep that 10-year first out, so that means they'll be the first out for 10 years, and then five years in a reserve status. So if we can, if we purchase these two now, and then in five years, we purchase another two, we can start that cycle. And what that will do is, that'll give the city an opportunity to start putting money away for that additional purchase that you know is going to be coming in five years. Maintenance costs. So maintenance costs with newer apparatus, of course. So maintenance costs with newer apparatus, of course, are, are much cheaper. And part of the problem we're having now with our older models is parts are becoming obsolete. The two '06s that we're looking at replacing, both of those motors have been rebuilt, what we call end frame. And that's partly of what we call a refurbish. It's not a full refurbish, but a partial refurbish. So they've already been refurbished once. With the newer apparatus, of course, with, with newer comes newer technology, newer safety features. Part of the newer safety features on, excuse me, on the Pierce Velocity are the new antilock braking, the secure systems that are, they're sensor controlled. So if they're going to hit an object, the sensors and the, the safety belts will restrain the firefighters. So these are just a few of this new safety features of the, the Velocity. Also, with the new design and with the, in the fire service, we have a huge problem, excuse me, with cancer. So with the new apparatus, there's what Pierce calls the Care Program, Cancer Awareness and Reduction to Exposure. And this comes, excuse me, with the Clean Cab concept. And with this, we can keep the carcinogens out of the cab and exposing our firefighters. So with that, I'd like to open up for any questions about the apparatus.
With the Pierce, does Modesto Fire use all Pierce as well?
Yes, they do, 100%. And that's part of what we're looking at with this program is, Modesto Fire uses the Pierce exclusively. And with that, our technicians with our fleet services are Pierce certified and they're allowed to do Pierce warranty work. The nearest dealer is in Sacramento. So that will save travel time by able to do that if we can reach an agreement with the City of Modesto to provide those services.
Do you know anybody in Modesto?
We, we just might. And, and with the fleet services in Modesto, the, the labor rate is actually much cheaper. And we look at bringing a proposal within the next two months to the City Council to have Modesto provide our fleet services for us. And they do stock quite a few parts too, which is, which is a big problem now is getting parts for the apparatus.
So is there ever a, like a dock-in-the-box Pierce person that works on trucks coming and like just doing a real quickie fix on something?
They will. If it's a warranty item especially, they'll get it, they'll come down and do that with the mobile repair.
Oh, I just wanted to ask, and if I missed it, I'm sorry, it's late.
Yeah, tired too.
So if council approves this, this 2.29 million over the 15 years, where's that money coming from, sir? Or being proposed to come from?
Mr. Moreno? Come on, man.
Okay, I agree, I just need to hear it.
I believe it's Measure A.
That's correct. The proposal for today's allocation is from Measure A.
There you have it.
Thank you. Are these trucks more energy efficient?
Yeah, and they are. And they're more environmentally efficient. And recently, our, one of our committees went back to the factory. And in Wisconsin, they are actually testing electric fire engines. So they are, they are coming and maybe before.
So we should see some fuel savings.
Yeah.
Tesla, Pierce, fire pumpers.
Yeah, they're, they're there. So Rosenbauer has one, they're being used, LA County now. And there's one being used, I believe, in Madison, Wisconsin. And they're using them at one of their busiest stations. And so far, the reviews are positive. They, they do have a backup diesel generator, just in case. But yeah, the newer engines are obviously carb approved. And that's part of what we're proposing tonight. And that's what will happen is.
We'll see some cost savings.
Of some of our older apparatus, we actually have an '88 Pierce engine that we're using for a hazmat decon that we're going to propose that we surplus, which is obviously a gross polluter. And, and once we get those, the new engines in, we will surplus the, the older engines and get rid of them. The 93 Pierce, or High Tech, excuse me, 93 High Tech that we use out at our training grounds, and it's used exclusively at the training grounds. We don't use that as a reserve.
Thank you.
I just have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, and I, and I have to say, Chief Ernst, welcome. Assistant Chief Wife, welcome. We're so glad you guys are here. My question is, and just because it's out there and everybody knows that it's open, the City Gate study, I just want to make sure that if council approves this tonight, we're not derailing anything for City Gate or, or putting anything off there.
Absolutely. Great question. And we've worked with City Gate with this process. And they actually helped create our replacement schedule that you have in your packet. So they helped create that five-year rotation. And they are going to come back to us with more recommendations because we do have a ladder truck that we need to look at, what we want to do with that or how we're going to operate with that or, or what our options are. So they will be coming back with, with different options for us.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Larson?
Yes, thank you so much and welcome, everyone. Thank you. The item talks about approving this tonight will go basically waive complying with going for the formal bid procedure, which would allow us to kind of compare prices and things like that. And I know there was internal evaluation of these things. So why not just go out to bid to find, to find the cheapest apparatus?
Great question. And the Houston Galveston Committee, that's, that's talked about in there, that's what we used when we per, when we made our purchase here in 2017 for the two Rosenbowers that we currently have. And what that is, is it's a process where, like in this case, and for, for what we were asking for, they went out to 27 different manufacturers to become up with the spec and to get the lowest spec and the lowest price. And it's commonly used with municipalities when they need different types of equipment to go through this process to get the best price. During our process, our internal evaluation of the Rosenbauer engine, the costs were very comparable. And I can tell you, in just the last two years, these prices have gone up dramatically. They doubled. I've been in the fire service now 22 years and it's, the price has doubled for an engine in the last 22 years. And on average, the, the price for apparatus goes up about 5% a year. So, and in the last two years, I say it's way above that 5% level. And this price that we have right now is good till March 2nd. And it's expected to even go up again if we needed to get another quote.
Within just a month?
Yeah, just within the last week as of Thursday, as we were doing this, this packet, we got an update on the interest rate and the interest rate had gone up.
Really?
Yes.
So how long would a bid process take then?
Chief Ernst?
So obviously, we're in day four of Turlock. So I can speak to what our typical bid process works in the City of Modesto. But we're, you know, anywhere from 90 to 180 days for a bid process. So this does meet all your municipal codes for competitive bid process. And that's why we use these type of consortiums to do the, that bidding. So you don't have to go through that staff time in that process.
Okay, to guarantee that, so, so this two-point, this expenditure that's being proposed, you think that it would, it would only increase even if we went out for the
Correct.
typical bid process right now to replace these needed replacements? Okay.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, and so we're ordering, as long as we approve it tonight, we're ordering immediately delivery in 2023, correct?
Yeah, it takes a minimum of a year. And everybody knows with the supply chain issues that we're having, I wouldn't doubt they would say it could even take longer. But the sooner, obviously, the sooner we order, the better we get on the list and get priority.
Then we make our first payment in March of 2023, delivery in July of 2023?
Correct.
Thank you.
It'll be the longest period of time that we didn't have any breakdowns on our rigs during that time of, when we don't have it. Mark that stuff down.
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and open it to the public, anyone wishing to speak on this item. Mr. Braggrum, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Yeah, kind of, yeah, okay. What's the possibility, excuse me? I would have liked to be able to have the full report from City Gate to see what our total needs were for the Fire Department for equipment. So we could determine, you know, if we should do this. I'm sorry, it's getting late. Interest payment plan as opposed to just purchasing outright. Okay, but from what you just said, it doesn't make any sense to put off a decision because the cost is just going to go higher. So what I would ask is, what would the price be if we decided tonight to just flat out buy it? Instead of trying to do the financing option, just saying, that's what we passed Measure A for. One of the things that we passed Measure A for, what would be the cost? Because the financing cost on this is $555,000. I see that you talk some about a $42,000 discount and a $43,000 discount. I don't know if that would go away if we bought it outright as opposed to financing. But that would be one of my main questions is, what about the possibility of just purchasing, just purchasing the equipment as opposed to financing it? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Bob Puffer, Turlock, California. What are the make in years of the current pumpers that we want to replace?
The two that we're.
Hang on, hang on, sir, we'll just write those down.
Okay. I'm sorry. That's my first question. And what engines do they have in the current trucks? And what engines do these Pierce's have? Secondly, has anybody gone to the rank and file Turlock firefighters and asked them what trucks they would like? We may be a Modesto Fire Department eventually, but we're not now. And I think our, our drivers of our current trucks should have a voice into what they want to drive. And lastly, no, two things. Number one, Mr. Braggrum, if you're going to buy these two new trucks, just buy them. Just buy them because your interest rate on leasing is probably, I don't know, 10, 12%. And lastly, I had brought this up before and I'll bring it up again. Is there any way we could refurbish those two trucks? Because there's companies that do it. There's companies that say if you can do it within 180 days. And they will also rent you a truck for that time. And your new trucks are going to be with current emission standards, which involves death and they run hotter. And I don't think you're going to get the life expectancy out of the new trucks that you did with, if you could put original powertrains in the other one. And I know everything's going to go electric and everybody wants new economy and stuff like that. But bottom line, when a fire happens, you got to hit that key and know that engine's going to start. And I think your technology back in 2003 is a more reliable engine. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll go back to how much would it cost to outright purchase it?
Okay.
Yes, please.
So when talking about funding sources and talking about Measure A, what it comes down to is where we're currently at as a snapshot of what that funding source looks like and our dire needs of this equipment. So they talked about potential refurbishing. What does that mean? But you, you heard the chief speak about cartridges and safety for the staff as well. So that has to be a factor they built into this. So you do have an interest rate of 3.65% built into the amortization schedule. There is conversation, again, like as the chief pointed out, interest rates are going up. They have been going up for some time. When they previously started talking about this, I talked to the lease organization, they went up about 50 basis points within the last two, three months, right? So interest rates are rising. That is a valid statement. So given the factor of the funding source, we opted to go through a more financing mechanism. One, because Measure A doesn't even have a reserve this time, right? Measure A is still building. If you took that cost factor of 1.7 and did that at this point, you'd take a large chunk out of your current funding mechanism without even having a, a budget conversation about that, right? And how that'll impact us. So you really need to build that, that overall fund so that you have those reserves so that we can do an appropriate budget process through that fund too as well. That's why financing is looked at this point. Because now you go into the budget process and start talking about, okay, how do we get this reserve built up again? Well, how do we reinstate our equipment program? So Measure A is going to be a component of that, right? So you can start carving those things out so that we can assess what needs to be done on a later date. So that's why financing was done at this format in this timeframe. Or recommended, I should say.
All right, thank you. I'm not sure if you're going to be able to cover some of these make, model, and year of the, the engines we have now?
Yeah, absolutely. So our, our two newest engines are Rosenbauer Type 1 pumpers. They, I will have to refer to Mike Harkison, Mike Harkson, for their exact engine in those. I'm assuming they're Cummins, but I'll let him speak to that. And I'll just quickly address the, the question about full refurbishing. There, there's a company in Las Vegas that does full fire engine refurbishes. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere there.
Yeah, don't go too far. But they do full refurbishes and they will take an engine and they will restore it and they will add some new components. But as you can imagine, if you take a, a, an '06, you're basically making an '06 engine to '06 standards. Where, you know, we've had 16, 17 years of technology since then with added safety features, ergonomics, everything that comes along with it, carb-approved engines. And so with, with modern technology and all the safety features for a first out engine, I wouldn't recommend a refurbish or a full refurbish. And what that is, it's a, it's an end frame. They go through the transmission, they repaint it, they put in new interior. But it's still basically an '06. And the only way that I would personally make that recommendation is for a reserve status engine that's not used very frequently or a type, like, like a volunteer type engine that's not used very frequently or a water tender with a full refurbish. So just to answer that question. So with our fleet, we have two, two Rosenbowers. Those are our newest ones. They're, they were purchased in 2017 and they're almost five years now. So they're almost halfway through their frontline expectancy as a first out apparatus. They... Didn't say what motors they have there.
They have Cummins ISO.
Okay, I assume they had the Cummins engines in there. And then our, our next newest ones were the, the '06s, the two '06s. And they also have the Cummins, yeah, ISO, is it ISO? Okay, so ISO engine. And then after that is our, our 2000. That's our truck. That's our 105-foot aerial.
That's ISX.
Oh, the ISX, it's got a little bit more horsepower. And then after that is our 1993. And that's our engine that's used out at our training facility. We don't use it as a reserve. It's just used out there for training. And once we get the new engines, we'll get rid of that one and the 99. Along with the 1988 Pierce that we use just for hazmat decon. It, it doesn't get used very often and we'll get rid of that also.
I guess then you could speak to what our staff would prefer? New or old?
I can speak to that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's day four, you can do that.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure it's known that this committee was comprised of Turlock members, not Modesto members. So Modesto had no input in what this recommendation was other than when we assumed the contract and had a day and a half to prepare this staff report, we, we validated it and, and worked with City Gate to make sure it was, it was within their recommendations as well. So it was, the committee was formed of Turlock firefighters.
Cool, thank you so much. All right, then bring it back.
Motion to approve the master lease purchase agreement for the Fire Department.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. I'm, we'd already closed the public hearing though, sir. I'm sorry. Was there something?
I don't think we really got an answer to the question of, at least I did understand. The, the answer to the question of purchase versus leasing, it sounded really like it's being said, we don't have the money. But we have the money. Measure A. I mean, last council meeting, you approved $1.5 million. Contract pretty high and you're saying you don't have the money? I, I don't understand.
I guess it's a, we can make the motion to either do, spend it all outright or we can make the motion to do as they've asked it with the lease. So I mean, that's, I guess that's something we can, we can do. Our finance director is kind of encouraging us not to, to do it that way right now. I remember Chief Bado was telling me that he needs four, but he would rather lease out first and get us started and then purchase two more after we have a full. after we have the full CityGate thing. Am I making that right?
Yeah, and to answer the question more specifically, it was about a $500,000 difference is the interest you'd pay over the life of the loan. So that's the savings that you'd receive if you paid it outright. But over 15 years.
Thank you. Call the roll, please. Counsel member, Vice Mayor.
Oh, Vice Mayor, did you-
She did.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Larson?
No.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, it passes for one descending vote by Councilmember Larson. And I just need, real quickly, I messed up and thank you, Mr. Moreno. When we did all our little fiscal year stuff, I didn't do the actual resolution that needed to be voted on as well. So item F was the resolution adopting all of those.
So moved.
Okay, so F is moved. Is there a second? For all the stuff that we already did, vote one-on-one?
Second.
Councilmember Larson, second. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, thank you. It passes. Sorry, Mr. Moreno, thank you for catching that. Back to, we have a fire department that has a verbal report to give. So he's calling you chief pumper then, right? Because these are the workers. Everybody gets a nickname.
Yeah. All right, well, good evening again, counsel. As of February 15th, we started our contract for service with the city of Turlock. As you know by now, Chief Bado and Chief Ogan did quite a bit of work in the few months that they were here. And we've been working on the transition with them for about a month now. And I've been coming down here and meeting with Chief Bado, and I can tell he has some very, very long list of items. So when you're a new fire chief and you come into a new department, you usually do what's called a 100-day review. And you come in, you don't make any decisions right away. You really evaluate the department, its needs, what it's doing well, what its challenges are. And then you develop a plan to meet all those and improve service levels and all that. Well, Chief Bado's done a lot of that for us. And he's already, he's put a lot of things in motion that needed to be addressed. So a lot of work's been done for us already, but we're gonna continue that process. So I just wanted to give you a quick overview of some of the things that we're working on. I'll try to keep it as high-level as possible, but some things that I think you should know that are going on in the fire department. So just so you know, part of the contract, you're gonna get a full-time deputy chief down here that's gonna be here full-time. And we've offered that position, and that person will be starting next week, March 1st. And you'll get to meet him at the next council meeting. And we also recently conducted internal promotion for the position of deputy, or excuse me, division chief in charge of operations. So Chief Harkson's here. I'd like to congratulate him on his promotion. We had some very fine candidates in the process, and he came out number one. So really proud of how he did. With the recent retire of Fire Marshal Gomez, coming into this, it was really challenging. So we were trying to think how we're gonna address this right away. Obviously, you approved the CSG contract tonight. So that's gonna, that's gonna help with some of the plan checks and continuity of business. So with that, we've moved Captain Bickel into the Fire Marshal's position. And he is currently the interim until we can do an internal recruitment for that position and the other division chief of training position. So that will be upcoming, and we got a meeting with HR tomorrow to address that. We've given contingent offers of employment to a fire inspector and a part-time neighborhood, and a part-time Neighborhood Service Division person. We recently hired five new firefighters. They started last week, and they're currently shadowing and getting ready for the fire academy that will start March 15th. And fortunately, we did receive a resignation today. One of our firefighters who is just getting ready to complete probation. He's gonna pursue a career in law enforcement.
All right.
Yeah.
Is he staying in the, in home, right, Turlock?
Moving to another county.
Failing you there, Jason, come on, man.
Yeah. We recently submitted a, what's it called, a safer grant for six firefighters. And obviously, in January, we obviously put in for a AFG grant for SEBA compressor and fill station. We're currently working on several CIP projects. Two of the bigger ones, Chief Becker is working on an RFP right now for two complete roof replacements at two of our stations. We look forward to the CityGate, a fire master plan study and the standards of coverage. It looks like the fire master plan should be completed by the end of the month. And still waiting on the status of the standards of coverage. That was delayed a little bit. They had some issues with the data acquisition from our old reporting system. And finally, in the coming months, Chief Ernst, myself, and the new deputy chief, we'll be getting out to the fire stations. We'll be getting to know our firefighters a little better. We like to hear from them what we're doing well in Turlock and what are some of our challenges that we can address here in Turlock. And it's really good to get out and get a good feel and let them know they have a voice and help do what we can to provide the things that they need so we can provide a higher level of service to our citizens that they deserve. So with that, we look forward. Myself and Chief Ernst are excited about this. It's been a lot of work, and we know there's better things to come, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we gotta go backwards. Did I? We did public participation then.
We have not.
Okay, I didn't think so. Open public participation now for any items that are left. Yes, Mr. Treewall, please.
Yes, council staff and a few Turlock citizens are still here. Public participation is really one of the most important parts of a council meeting. It's a time when our Turlock citizens can address their council. So I have a couple of questions. What is the criteria for changing the agenda? And what's the procedure to make these changes? And then I just have a question again. Does this mean that this council does not respect us, the Turlock citizen? Since this is public participation, I'm gonna go back to the homeless issue and talk about MOES, the Modesto Outdoor Emergency Shelter. When they first opened this up, there were very few people there. It was underneath the, what is it, Ninth Street Bridge? And it started out with a few people, and in just a short time, they had 500 homeless people in that facility. It wasn't perfect, but it was doing a job, and it was working. And what they did, they replaced it with the Salvation Army facility. And that only housed like 250 people. So automatically, now they had 250 more people. So now their homeless are scattered all throughout the city of Modesto. The thing that actually works is housing first. Find a location where you can put the people. It's actually 80% effective. That's how effective it is. Everything that was discussed tonight, well, you already know my opinion about that, but it's only about 10% effective. So what are we gonna do? We're gonna help 10% of the people, or are we gonna help 80% of the people? Because what you have chosen to do at this time is to help 10% of the people. So we're gonna still have 70, or a lot of people out there on the streets. How many human beings, or how many homeless humans, beings, did you talk to? This is a question to the two people on the committee. How many homeless human beings did you talk to when you were preparing this report? And that's it, thank you.
Anyone else?
Long council meetings here lately, huh? Okay, oh, good evening, Madam Mayor. Council members, staff, welcome all the new faces. Okay, just to add a little comment on what Mel just said. When you change it around to where we have public comment at the end, that denies us a chance of asking to have consent items polled and being able to make comments or ask questions about some of the consent items. I mentioned one, for example, at the last meeting. Was it the last meeting? I forget. You know, actually based upon concern that you, Madam Mayor, had expressed about the work for Lander Avenue. So I hope that you were able to address that with staff otherwise. But that would be one of the complaints that I have about that. I have a question. Update on Columbia Pool. It was a long time ago. It seems to me that you sent out a contract to Odell Engineering for the engineering design work on Columbia Pool. I know that I had some very specific engineering questions related to that. I, if nothing else, would appreciate being able to find out what had happened with that, what the plans are. Also, I seem to remember for the WeCare building, CDBG funds, that there were plans for tearing down part of the building and building up a two-story building, if I remember correctly, at WeCare. And the city had invested some, it was either CDBG or home funds, or I'm not sure exactly, but they had invested some. This was last year when Marin was still, Marin Pitt was still here. So I'd like to know what the status of that is. I will just say again, from personal experience, when you talked about respite care for taking care of elderly loved ones, especially if they are suffering from dementia and/or Alzheimer's, how difficult that is and how very necessary respite care is. For some of us, a few days of respite care probably saves our lives. So I can't emphasize how important that is. And it is also very expensive for the, you know, the poor can get some help. The rich can afford it, but the people in the middle, you know, it's very expensive for caregivers. It's like twice the minimum wage if you go through an agency. So you have backup and insurance, and they handle all the tax-related stuff, so on and so forth. So you're talking like $30-plus an hour. You're talking a lot of money every day, every week, every month. So any help along those lines would be appreciated. And the last comment that I will make, you'll love this. Okay, so looking through the budget, you know, one of my issues is franchise fees. Okay, so you have, for the garbage collection, you have about a $1.685 million franchise fee. You have a franchise fee for PG&E of $397,000? Franchise? It's my speech defect. We're in a second hand. Franchise fee for cable of $457,000. And then also for card room operators, permit $240,000. So again, I'd kinda like to see here why we need to be adding that onto what consumers are paying. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Anyone else?
Okay, last time I'll be up here, guys. You just passed a lease for two trucks that are gonna cost $2,290,000 over the next 15 years. That's my understanding of how long this lease is gonna be. And you could've saved a half a million dollars by purchasing outright. And Madam Vice Mayor, you were saying, well, let's make sure we put a line item to have lights replaced at Pedretti in a few years when it's needed. Well, there are line items to fund for new apparatus, and the money was not there. Because circumstances happen, and you can set up all the line items you want, but you better make sure you have the cash there. And it didn't happen for these apparatuses, and that's why we're here now. I don't see how you're going to be able to make this lease payment and then expect to have another $3 million in five years to buy two more pumpers. That's it, thanks.
Anyone else? Close public comment and go to council items for future consideration. We can cover that in our comments if you have specific comments. I can't answer all of them, so I'm at a loss for some of it. We'll go through, I'll get some of them.
Do we allow staff, don't we usually have staff respond to some of them that we're asked?
Usually we'll say, okay, so Mister whomever, please, you know, go offline to ask that question, right? Because I'm not thinking that a lot of those questions can be answered right off the top of their heads, right? To the franchise fees and things of that nature. I'm happy to have us go along in those, you know, like there was, the last two meetings have been pretty heavy lifting. So I'm guessing the reason, the agenda, it's a prerogative, Mr. Treewall, for us to figure out how we, how we, you know, they had the elderly ladies, we had the-
I was gonna address that in my comments.
Okay.
For that particular item.
Thank you.
But none of that stuff's agenda, so.
Go ahead, if you wanna cover some of it, please.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I'd like to, but yeah.
I agree with some of the sentiment earlier in terms of the public comment. I mentioned at the last meeting, Mr. Wilson, you were not sitting there yet, but you were here, that there is an item that should be coming back to council of like a policy decision of if we allow our meetings to be streamed via Zoom, since we have the capability to do so. And there was not really a decision to, there was no policy decision to not do it anymore and allow people to call in. So that, I think that that's, I just wanted to reiterate that that's something that should be coming back up with us. And also, welcome to our new staff, our new leaders, our team Turlock. So thank you guys for joining us. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for sitting here with us and being a part of the success that we're all passionate to bring forward. So thank you guys so much, thank you.
And for future consideration? I'm hoping that soon we'll bring back everybody's ARPA information from what they solicited from their districts or from anyone, and see if we can have some sort of little workshop to work through that.
Yeah. Consolidate everything based on your guys' experiences.
Okay. Awesome. Council questions, comments, and announcements.
Comments, yeah. Look forward to the public comment thing. My explanation related to the moving public comment round, I think we should keep that as an anchor. It's just, you know, it's not a great look when we've got a packed house, people that are here potentially to speak to us, and then we're gonna make them wait until 10:00 PM. So I hope that it's not something that we really get into the habit of doing. And just because I said I would do this, for those of you, I put something out to the public saying, give me ideas for improvements to your neighborhood. It is sad how little engagement we get from the public on these kinds of things. But here's some things that people wanted to hear, wanted to see. An update to our city code, so it's easier and cheaper to start community gardens. Love that. Obviously, road repair, everyone talks about road repair. We know that you guys want roads repaired. We're doing it. We're working on it. We know that you guys want roads repaired. We're doing it. We're working on it. Traffic signal timing, that's something I've talked with a previous city engineer. We did? For, oh, cool.
Sorry.
I'll throw out. Great. Tom, we listened to you, and we got it on there. Jesse Heinrich, you seem to have a lot of questions about the cannabis process, but I don't think that you asked for any particular things related to how to make Turlock neighborhoods better. So I don't know what to put there. Thank you for your limited engagement, folks. I want more of you in these seats.
I did have some comments, but I, but I'm glad that Andrew got his, his go with it. I, I just had two things. I didn't want to put it with items for future consideration to not have any timeline associated with it. But just put it on our radar. The Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act is getting some additional funding. That's coming to, Mr. Wilson is shaking, is nodding his head. He understands. And a lot of it's going to be through grants and federal grants. And it makes, looking at the staffing infrastructure we have for grants, we really relied on our senior staff to, to identify them and apply for them. And I would love to see what it would look like to have, be really set up so we can really capitalize and, and, and get that federal funding, that additional federal funding that's going to be coming into communities, particularly low-income communities. That's what the bill is starting to look like, disadvantaged communities. Sometimes we fit those categories, sometimes we don't. But it's going to be a lot, and I don't want to lose out on it because we don't have the staffing capacity, even though we do have the revenue now to start talking and exploring those ideas now in the future. So I want to put that on our radar. As well as, I just wanted to just speak to the incident, the violent incident that happened during downtown over the weekend at one of our, the local businesses downtown. It could have got, it could have been a lot worse, a lot more devastating. And this is something that I think points us and really encourages this council even more to really take initiative and really, and really step into what we've talked about with having a dedicated officer. And this is something that I have been able to speak with Chief Hayden about. And I think that it's something that we can really look into, especially when our funding allows us to. But having a dedicated officer, especially during the time when we have such a high population in our, as our nightlife is increasing over the last, eh, less than a decade or so, I would say, to make sure that anybody who wants to enjoy our beautiful, vibrant downtown feels extremely safe in those settings. So that's something that I just wanted to put on our radar. And thank you so much, Chief, for taking, taking that phone call with me and talking that through. It's something that I think we all would be really passionate about, the safety of that community.
Yes, first of all, welcome to your first official meeting. Looking forward to many, many more. Chiefs Ernst and, and Wise, thank you for coming and, and welcome, along with Chief Hayden. We've got a lot of new chiefs here. I just wanted to let you know, I, I had three ARPA meetings. The first was attended by seven people, second was attended by five people, and the last one was attended by one person. So ARPA, ARPA isn't, isn't a big priority for, for a lot of people. I also know that Councilmember Moniz has had a couple, and that Councilmember Nazrati is going to have two this week. So hopefully, they'll be a little more attended. And I've already turned over my, my findings from my, my ARPA meetings to Director Moreno. And I believe I sent them to the city manager, and if not, we'll make sure he gets them. Thank you.
Yeah, I do. I'm going to address why I moved the agenda order around, because that was my choice to do that. It is a council member's prerogative to move any item backward or forward on the agenda, so long as it passes with a vote. I did that this evening because of all of the ladies that showed up, and I felt it was appropriate. And sometimes, when we have a very heavy lift on these meetings, that needs to happen. I also need everybody to keep in mind that public participation, the item four that was moved tonight, that's additional public comment for non-agenda items. We never take away the public's ability to comment on an item that we are currently voting on. Now, Mr. Bridegroom had a valid point about the consent calendar, and I think if we do that, again, we need to, we need to work on that. But I think, you know, by now, if you would have spoken up, somebody would have pulled something for you. Lastly, I just want to say, Chief Ernst, Chief Hayden, Assistant Chief Wise, you're like six days and four days, and you people have been busy. So thank you for all your efforts. It's very clear and apparent to me that you've all hit the ground running since you've gotten here. And I know you haven't been here very long, but like, I'm already getting feedback, and I'm not sure about you, but you guys are just meshing, and everybody is working like very harmoniously together, which is surprising because we have a lot of new faces around here. But it's great news. And the last thing I want to say is promoting that guy back there, good job. We're very happy about that. So thank you.
Wow. Big personality here. So, you know, it might be, going back for just a second, it might be helpful for the items that we can't answer right away, like talking about the CDBG or Home Cares Act and the building with We Care. If there was something that came out afterwards on website, you know, after, after meeting responses, you guys have the meeting the next day, your exec meeting, maybe we could answer the questions about that, about, there was another one with the Columbia Park. Those, those kinds of things, I, I know you guys need a little bit more to, to get it. And then just putting it online or something, so, you know, that we know that we heard you, because that's the whole point of public comment. But sometimes, I don't, I, I mean, I, I can't answer, and it, putting them on the spot for them to go, I'd have to research it, makes it even more awkward. But we, we want your input, and it, it's valid. Whether we always agree or not doesn't mean that we don't want to hear what you have to say. And then when you talked about the grants, Councilmember Larson, I, I'm working very closely, as well as Ms. Eddy and Mr. Wilson and I, with Townsend. You ask them for help, and they will help with grants constantly. So I'm talking to them about COPSS grants. We didn't get the last ones, but it looks like this is probably going to be even better because we're in a better position now. SAFER Grants, talking to them, right, we're on, we're on task, we're talking about it. Water, we didn't get anything because we didn't ask. There's other things. We say we asked, but we didn't ask. And it's really important to use what we're paying for, right? These guys know how to help us get to the right people and get what we need. So hopefully, we can do that. And then I believe Mr. Petralakis wanted to say something.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to record, I'm going to recommend that we not have the closed session tonight. The item did not really need to appear on closed session.
Great, thank you, Mr. Petralakis. So then that means we are going to adjourn. Thank you all. Good night.